Great, and Maurice, I think the council president, looking for the link.
Oh, okay, uh, kind of hard for me to do that at the moment, let me see.
Don't let him in.
I believe we sent the link to all council.
Yep.
Um, I don't have his email address, can someone, uh, type that or forward me his request?
Just got a text here.
Or Callie, could you just forward him the invite?
Yes, will do.
Thank you. I've got so many things open on my, on my screens here, I don't want to.
You could drop the whole shelf, you played around too much.
Well, that's why I don't like to do too much here.
Because that has happened.
So Freddie, you want to start?
Yep. Good morning, everyone. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open legal law, under COVID-19 declaration, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Acts during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Abstentions from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting have the opportunity to be heard, we ask that you use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. Raise hand can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen.
Thank you, Freddie.
There's another, there's another slide, forgive me, there's another slide, the slide just changed. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being live streamed via YouTube for public view. We have provided a link to the meeting for those who wish to speak on a particular case via our website and email. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Mr. Chairman, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Freddie. Uh, Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Present.
Downing.
Present.
Plucker.
Present.
Curry.
Present.
Paul.
Present.
Slide. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have a forum. Oh, Charles, are you there?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we do have a forum.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, before we get started, um, last time we had the planning commission, we ran over and we lost a quorum. So to help expedite people getting their approvals, um, I asked people doing design review to keep their presentations to seven minutes or less. Lot splits to five minutes or less. Um, and this way we can get through the whole meeting in a reasonable timeframe. Um, we're going to take some of the things that we missed the last meeting first. And so the first one that we're going to take is the Viaduct new residential construction. Um, and when you present this project, if you could, uh, present basically the exterior of the building that we're reviewing and briefly, if you want to go over the floor plan, just briefly, just so you can get through, uh, the seven minutes. Anyone speaking to this? I need to swear you in.
Uh, hi, this is, uh,
Speaking to this Maurice.
We have Gary, Scott, and John, uh, speaking today.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
All right. Go ahead.
Uh, hi, good morning, everyone. This is Gary O'Grocky from Dimon Architects. Paul's out today, he's getting married tomorrow, so, uh, we wouldn't cancel his wedding, so you're stuck with me today. So, uh, anyway, uh, just to, uh, review, David, as you had, uh, mentioned, uh, we did present this last, uh, commission meeting and, uh, so I'll be brief and, uh, then obviously if there's anything that I gloss over, happy to answer any questions. Um, I think we, we, we were done and there was no quorum, as you had mentioned, but anyway, to get started, so the site is on Superior Viaduct. Uh, it's, uh, next to the old Spaces, uh, art gallery, as you can see here in this slide, we can go to the next slide.
It's right behind my head, actually.
Oh. Um, and so you can kind of see, here's the, uh, the building context. Uh, so the, in the upper left-hand corner, uh, that's actually the site fronting Superior Viaduct. The slide to the right of that is the old Spaces Gallery to the south. And then, uh, the next slide over, uh, on the upper right-hand corner is the building to the, uh, to the, to the north. So, uh, we can go to the next slide, we can come back to this if we need to. Uh, again, so here's a, uh, sort of a zoom in on the, uh, of the floor plan, you can see our building is in the center of the two buildings. Uh, uh, and this is showing the, the lower level where that, where there's a parking garage and there is a a, a, a low existing, uh, uh, two-story parking garage that, uh, we are proposing to demolish, we'll put this building, uh, here. Uh, next slide. Uh, again, the floor plan, you can see the, uh, ground floor is essentially parking, it's access from Washington Avenue. Uh, there's a small lobby and, uh, some, uh, service, uh, sort of, uh, entry, uh, service, uh, next slide. And again, just more of the floor plan for the lower level, next slide. Okay, now this is, this is the, uh, the, the ground level as you access from Superior Viaduct, so the Washington side is lower, Superior Duct is higher. So this is the main lobby to the building and we're proposing, uh, to, uh, to get a tenant there, I think we're showing, uh, uh, the mailroom and some other sort of sorts of things there. Uh, next slide. Uh, again, uh, just more of the parking garage. Next slide. Uh, so this starts the, uh, sort of the, the, what, what we were seeing previously was the base of the building, now this is the tower residential portion of the building, as you can see, the, this portion of the building steps in. It's still, it's stepped in from the, uh, north and south, uh, existing buildings on the side, so it does step back and it'll be more apparent when we get to the elevations, but, um, essentially it's, uh, apartment units on these floors. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this is the eighteenth, I'm sorry, the eighth to the seventeenth level, again, just typical floor plans with apartments on each level. Uh, next slide. Uh, the twenty-first floor where we have, uh, a slightly different, uh, eighteen to twenty-one, slightly different apartment mix, but again, uh, residential apartment units on these floors as well. Uh, next slide. Uh, again, uh, a slightly different apartment mix, uh, based on the building stepping and, uh, uh, as the building goes up, it, it, due to zoning requirements, we were forced to step back and it does affect the unit plan, but again, more apartments, uh, next slide. Uh, so the top two floors are, uh, amenities for the building, uh, we have resident lounge, uh, fitness rooms, yoga rooms, et cetera. Uh, next slide. And on the very top floor, again, uh, more lounges with a rooftop deck and a pool. Uh, next slide. Uh, these are unit block plans, I'm going to kind of go through these unless anyone, very quickly, unless anyone has any. But these are just the typical units to show the various, uh, sizes and bedroom configurations, next slide. Again, typical unit plans, let's go to the next slide. Uh, unit plans, next slide. Uh, more unit plans, next slide. Again, more unit plans, next slide. Let's go to the next one. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the building section, so you can see, uh, how the building is organized, that, you know, we have the, the, the parking base, the residential tower atop the, uh, the base and in the section, you can see how the building does step back on the, uh, Washington and Viaduct, uh, sides and, and that was a zoning requirement that, uh, you know, we're meeting the requirements and you kind of see how the building steps and you can see the top two floors or the emerging floors, which we spoke about in the floor plans. Uh, next slide. Uh, you know, this, there, there was some discussion previously about, uh, you know, we are going to be, uh, building next to two existing buildings and we did reach out to the neighbors, we've reached out to the block club, we've had various meetings with, uh, planning and, and different city officials and, uh, and this, this is a, just sort of applied to illustrate that we are investigating and it's, uh, you know, something clearly we have to address as to how we build this building without, uh, disturbing the buildings on the, on either side. And that is something that's in process. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the elevation on the Viaduct side. Uh, you can see there's the base sort of aligns with the two, uh, existing buildings on either side. Residential tower portion rises in a sort of a vertical spine with it, with a metal grill that, uh, is sort of one of the features on the, uh, Superior Viaduct side. Uh, next slide. This is on the Washington side, uh, you know, sort of the back of the building, I, the building really doesn't have a back, but if there is a back, there's here, and so you can kind of see that down at the base, it's where the, uh, inner into the parking garage, you can see the parking, uh, garage base and then the tower above. Uh, let's go to the next slide. Uh, it's the east elevation. Uh, again, this is mostly the apartment units, you don't, you don't, you don't see the base of the building here because it's, uh, you know, concealed by the existing building next to it. Uh, next slide. So this is the same, uh, same sort of thing on the other side of the building. Uh, next slide. Uh, these are just some inspiration images, I guess the, the only thing really to look at here is in the, it's like one, two, three, down on the left-hand side. That's sort of our, uh, sort of intent for that, uh, grill, uh, perforated grill metal piece that sort of rises up vertically on the Washington, or I'm sorry, on the Superior Viaduct side. Uh, next slide. Uh, again, that second row down, that middle grill, that's sort of the intent of what we're, uh, proposing for that grill on the, uh, Superior Viaduct side. You can kind of see that grill on the, uh, elevation above where there's a, and a base portion, next slide. Uh, again, this is a, just more, more of the grill, actually, this is slightly updated, let's, let's go to the next slide. Uh, so now you can kind of see what the building, uh, we're showing it, proposing it to look like, uh, you can see it in context. Uh, this is looking, looking to the west. Uh, so you can kind of get a sense of the scale of the building and, uh, the materials. The materials essentially are, are, well, we'll, we'll, we'll get into the close-ups, we can talk about the materials a little bit more, but let's go to the next slide. Uh, so here's looking, looking, uh, to the east, to the northeast, sort of, downtown, so you can see that the base, uh, the, the, the main, uh, tower, the shaft of the building is glass and metal panel with, uh, glass balcony railings. Uh, you know, we have some different articulation at the ba, at the top, which, uh, we, we were asked to look at this and we, uh, are studying, we, and we are just seeking, uh, schematic design approval, approval at this point and, uh, so when we come back for final, that, we may have to tweak the top a little bit, we're studying some minor, uh, adjustments to that. Let's go to the next slide. Again, another view of the, of the tower a little closer up. Uh, next slide. Uh, again, just another view showing the tower, you can kind of see that this is looking, uh, to the southeast, you can see the, uh, the garage articulation at the base in this one, next slide. Uh, this is a view of the roof deck. Next slide. Uh, so this is the, uh, so looking at the base on the Washington side. Uh, so you can see we have, we're proposing some, uh, uh, sort of channel glass to conceal the garage, uh, parking behind it and uh, another comment that Landmark's made at the very base where the, at the pedestrian level, we are studying some minor tweaks to that to make that a little, uh, maybe a little more pedestrian friendly. Next slide. This is on the Superior Viaduct side, this is the main lobby of the building and where the two white flower pots are, that would be the lobby and, uh, see the, the articulation and what we're proposing, uh, the base is, is a, we're showing a gray brick. Uh, and some of the, uh, articulation on the windows, it's, uh, it, it appears to be, uh, like a steel, uh, sort of I-beam, sort of, uh, articulation and we're, it won't be an actual I-beam, it'll be some sort of a aluminum or some sort of, uh, metal to, to, to create that effect. And, uh, and I, I didn't like to mention, this is a steel structure, just, that's what we're proposing right now. Next slide. Get another view of the base. Uh, next slide. And I think that's it, so that's, uh, had to go through a fast lot of slides, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Members.
Yeah, this is Dami, Paul, I was just curious, um, especially in that, the, the first, the open air, uh, the windows there that you can see, is there any, um, plan to incorporate art that you can see, like, in any of the, uh, wall canvases, as you look through the wall?
Right, is this, um, so this would be, I guess you could kind of see it in this view here, so you're you're, I think, if I understand your question, you're speaking to the left-hand side and the two windowways. Right, so we're going to do some, the, the thought is to do something there, that you see something through the windows, right now you can kind of see, we're showing some uh, sort of a light fixture, sort of a, a, artistic installation of some sort. So the thought is to do something there and what exactly is going to happen on that inside, I would say we don't have that a hundred percent determined, but the thought is to put something there because you would see through it, especially at night to, you know, to give it some visual interest.
Thank you.
Uh, this, uh, Lillian, um, I, um, uh, would like to move approval with the project and just to clarify, you're asking for conceptual approval?
A schematic, schematic approval.
Schematic approval.
That, that's correct.
And, uh, obviously, um, incorporating design reviews comments, are you guys okay with that in terms of, at the base? I, I do agree with, uh, just some, really studied the base of the building in terms of how pedestrians interact in that space.
Uh, we, we, we are, we're, we're actually studying some, uh, especially on the, on the Washington side, I think that's where most of the concern was, so we are looking at options for that. Um, so yes, that will be, you know, we'll, we'll have a robust, uh, base at that level for, you know, we'll go for final approval.
Okay.
My second, August.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have John, uh, Del Cole, with his hand raised.
John? Hello, hello, Planning Committee, thank for, uh, hearing me today. Um, uh, by way of introduction, I am, uh, Vice President of the Stonebridge Towers, uh, apartment condo, uh, building across from the, uh, from this project. And I recently have been, uh, appointed as of Monday, uh, to carry on the responsibilities of Scott Alesworth, uh, representing the, uh, waterfront district block club. I just had a, a, a few comments today and I don't know if this is the right time, uh, to bring up infrastructure issues at, at a design review. But, um, I wanted to bring up two things, uh, parking in the area and traffic flow in the area. And, you know, one of the things that was brought up at our, uh, block club review, and, and this is not necessarily a part of the, uh, the developer's responsibility, we just wanted a good, uh, a good planning, a good neighborhood plan going forward. Um, uh, but we, we have a parking crisis in the area right now, particularly with, with my building and some of the other buildings and neighboring buildings and um, we, we fear that the addition of more, uh, more pressure on those sources without, uh, thinking about where we can put in more resources uh, at the same time and parallel. Um, we, we'd like some thought, uh, put into that, uh, by all, uh, all, all of the, the responsible city team. And the other thing is, and we've, we've brought this up, is, uh, right in, uh, the point of where this area, where this building's going in on Washington and then, uh, just west of that, we have, uh, West Twenty-Fourth, which is a, uh, a, a, a very tight two-way street right on this block, which goes into an elevated blind spot on the Viaduct. And then there's a one-way coming off of, uh, West Twenty-Fifth, uh, onto Washington and there's no egress, you can't, you can't go west on that one-way, that's a recent change. And we would just like, uh, some thought, uh, to go into, uh, parking and uh, uh, traffic considerations with the addition of our new neighbor here. Scott, would you like to add?
Um, yeah, I, I just, uh, I agree with, uh, John, I think this is an exciting project and I'm very, um, thankful that the, uh, developer has been so willing to work with the block club. And they have modified their design, they have made it more aesthetically, uh, compliant with the neighborhood, you know, this is an industrial neighborhood. And I think Wayne and the entire team at Dimon, uh, Architects has done a great job as far as changing up the look to make it more cohesive with the rest of the community. Um, and like John says, you know, uh, we are working with the street, the block club is working with the streets department to do a, a review of, uh, the traffic flow and hopefully that, uh, we can fix that one little, um, mistake that when O.D.R. redid that intersection of Washington and, uh, West Twenty-Fifth Street, we can fix that uh, one-way and make it a two-way and really improve the traffic flow in the, uh, area, but um, I think this is a great design personally, just speaking for myself, I know a lot of other people in the block club love this and I think it's really exciting to see that there's some real strong development coming to the West Bank's flats.
Thank you for your comments. Um, can anyone, Maurice, do you know if we've gotten a letter from the council person or are they on the call?
I don't see Councilman McCormick, uh, on the call and I'm not aware of any letter. Mr. Bozak, do you know if we got a support letter?
Uh, no, I don't, but I would defer to Anthony Santora, who ran the Downtown Flats meeting, if you may have more information.
Good morning, Commission, I have not received a letter or heard from the councilman in regards to this project.
Okay, we, we probably want to reach out to him and make sure that sure he's involved with it, but just make sure that we ask. Um, okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion from the planning commission. Bearing none, I'll, I'll, uh, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Plucker.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Yes.
Motion carries, good luck. Okay, we're going to zoning map amendments. Um, the first one is an unnumbered, uh, ordinance and it's changing the area use height districts of parcels of land north and south of Harvard Avenue between East Fifty-Fifth Street and Western Property Line, the Western Property Line of sixty-nine-hundred Harvard Avenue. Um, we're first going to hear from staff, um, is going to do a presentation and if there's a sponsor, we'll hear a sponsor testimony and then we'll open it up to the public and the council person if they want to speak. So.
Good morning. Uh, Shannon Leonard, City Planning, um, so this was a, a collective, um, we were working on this with Councilman Bracatelli, Nicole Cahoon from our office of Staff Planner in Slavic Village, the CDC, um, to really just look at this area of Harvard that is a mix of residential and retail and kind of remove some of the industrial zoning designations as well as the general retail, um, just to get in line more with the citywide 2020 plan and some of the other neighborhood plans. Um, and then also to ensure that any future development or infill is consistent with the residential and the neighborhood retail nature of this section of Harvard. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so the current permitted uses here, you'll notice is there's a mix of local retail, general retail, general industry, as well as semi-industry use districts, so I'm going to walk you through um, each section of this area of Harvard. I also want to mention that this is just one part of the Harvard, um, area that we're looking at to do rezoning, so you'll see another, um, two rezonings coming towards this commission, um, in the coming weeks and months, um, just to clean up this area of Harvard between uh, Broadway and, uh, and East Fifty-Fifth Street. Next slide, please. So this is the proposal here, as you can see, we're just, uh, changing some of the general retail and industry to match the current land uses as well as get it in line with the 2020 plan and some of the other neighborhood plans. Next slide, please. So the first section we'll talk about here is the orange section that you saw on the map. Uh, the proposal here, right now, this is considered, uh, general retail and we're proposing to change it to multifamily residential, this will get it. Uh, the current land uses on the, along this area of Harvard are mostly two-family and multifamily. There are a few, I believe there's the property here along E Sixty-Eighth was just recently demolished without a permit, um, which kind of spurred this and turned into a used car lot. Um, so they have requested change this section to multifamily to match the neighboring, um, convent property uh, to the east of this building, um, that's already currently multifamily. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide, please.
Shannon, if you can go into song a little bit while we're waiting, there's a little background music.
I, I don't think you want me to sing, I would clear out the whole, this whole meeting.
Hey Maurice, we got a problem?
Did we lose them?
No, I can see them.
It's technical, she's, she's working through it.
Okay.
If the commissioner, if the commission members don't mind, I'll, I can chime in a little bit for part of this discussion.
That sounds great. Uh, Councilman?
Thank you, uh, Councilman Telly Bracatelli, um, this section of Harvard, um, is in Ward Twelve and, uh, as, uh, Ms. Leonard mentioned, um, we've been working with, uh, Nicole Cahoon and staff at Slavic Village Development. And I'll turn it back to Shannon.
Sorry, sorry about that, folks, my, uh, complete screen froze up, I couldn't hear or see anything for a minute, so uh, if I'm behind on slides, Shannon, where do you want me?
No, you're perfect here, Maurice, thank you.
Uh, I just had a hairy conniption here, thinking that the whole, the whole meeting crashed, could continue, sorry.
All right, thank you. Um, this area here is south of Harvard, um, between Clement and Park. Um, right now it's currently zoned semi-industry. Um, so our proposal here is to match the current land uses as well as, um, what they should be um, in terms of, so on the left-hand side of the screen, um, of the, in the green, you'll notice, uh, that we are proposing the limited retail and on the, uh, west side, east side, two-family residential. And really this is to match the current land uses on, uh, Clement, but also on Park. Um, currently that, there are a few parcels there that have been turned into kind of like a junkyard, but there is definitely room for some info housing. Uh, they are also located within two hundred feet of a general industry, so we're really just bringing the, uh, zoning in line so that the homes that are here, they can, uh, uh, get insurance and refinance and if they want to rebuild or build, they'd be able to be, uh, rebuilt under the non-conforming code in section three fifty-nine. Um, and so this is just a view looking west on Park and a view looking, uh, west on Clement, uh, and a view looking west on Clement, just so you can see that the current use here is mostly one- and two-family residential. Next slide, please. Immediately adjacent in this section is the federal equipment building. This is really just used to be storing medical equipment, pharmaceutical-type things. They have other properties, I believe, within the city, but this is mostly just their storage. We are proposing to change this to limited retail business. This will allow them to continue their uses as they are grandfathered in. But if they were to sell this building, it could be maybe used as a maker space within the neighborhood, since it's immediately adjacent to residential. Next slide, please. This section of Harvard is currently, at E64th, is already zoned local retail. The only proposal here is to just correct the area section and to bring the entire parcel to local retail, since there's currently a split zoning issue. And that's really the gist of it. This is the CVS, and we really just want to be able to keep the neighborhood retail at this location. Next slide, please. This section is at East 55th, right at the city's border of Newburgh Heights. And this is currently zoned general retail. We really just want to align the zoning with the current structures and ensure that future development is consistent with the neighborhood character. So it's more neighborhood retail to align with the homes that are already along this area of the street. The pictures you see on the right is just a view looking east on Harvard from Newburgh Heights, and a view from south side of Harvard looking west. Next slide, please. This is the section south of the shopping center of Harvard, between the E68th, where we propose the multifamily. Currently, it's all zoned general retail here, and we are proposing to change it to local retail. Again, that's just to ensure that future infill development or any new uses are pedestrian-friendly, and they're considerate of the proximity to the residential uses immediately south of them. Next slide, please. So this is just giving you some existing context, the proposal of the area to be rezoned. So you can see there's a mix of retail and residential uses. And really, we just want to make the zoning match the land use and the future needs and desires of this community. Next slide, please. So this is the proposal. Again, this was a collective effort between Councilman Bracatelli, myself, the CDC, and the neighborhood planner Nicole from our department. We just really need to bring the uses in line, the zoning in line with the uses, as well as plan for future development or infill uses here.
Thank you. Councilman Bracatelli, did you want to speak before we open it up to the public?
I will wait. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to open it up to the public. We're first going to hear from proponents, those people in favor of the zoning change. And then we're going to hear from opponents, those people against the zoning change. We ask you to state your name clearly, if you're an impacted property owner, your location, and then keep your comments to three minutes or less, and try not to go over something that someone else has already brought up. So I'm going to ask for proponents, those people in favor of the zoning change, proponents.
Mr. Chairman, we have no hands raised at the moment?
Okay, opponents, those people against the zoning change, opponents.
Still no hands raised, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I'll close the public part of the meeting. Councilman, it sounds like you really did a good job out there. No one wants to comment. It's come in to you already.
It's a credit to Shannon and Nicole and the staff at Slavic Village Development. Slavic Village Development did do a mailing out to the public, to the key stakeholders, as well as those who would be receiving these mailings. And it is really just an upgrade, as Shannon said, to mirror mostly what is already being done in this district. And as was pointed out, there's been a number of demolitions, and there's a few closed businesses, like a Rite Aid, et cetera, along this corridor. So upgrading the zoning and mirroring the district makes a lot of sense at this time. And then cleaning up some of the stuff like the CVS, where we had the split lot, because when they purchased, there were a couple different uses over there. And then they combined those parcels, which ended up having that split lot by the CVS there. And so we've been seeing a lot of new activity coming. The brick house at the corner of East 55th and Harvard has been sold. The new owners coming in with a pet-friendly, bike-friendly bar called Leonard's, not after Shannon, after his dog, Leonard. So, and across the street was a commercial building that was demolished, and the city of Cleveland, and the County Land Bank donated it to Newburgh Heights, so they can have a Welcome to Newburgh Heights Mayor Elkins sign on the corner. And as you go down the corridor, you'll see a number of distressed buildings torn down, and then our retail, which has been improved along that corridor. So it's been, it's been good to see some of the changes going on, but upgrading the zoning was very important at this time. So thank you very much, commission members.
Thank you, Councilman. Commission members, it's in your hands now.
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Motion carries. Councilman, good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too. Okay, now we're going to lot consolidations and lot splits. We ask the presenter to keep their comments to five minutes or less. And let's move on to the first one. Permanent parcel number 01613117. This is at 3209 West 46th Street. Who's here for this one? Maurice?
Mr. Chairman, we have Floria and Jorge. Signed up.
Go ahead, please. Are they on the call?
Hi, good morning. This is Floria Aguilera.
Before you get going, we're going to need to take this off the table. So it sounds like we have a presenter. So, commission members?
Take it off the table.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead now. You're off the table. You can present.
Okay. Hi, good morning. My name is Floria Aguilera from Front Street Realty. I represent Jorge Ramirez, and with this transaction, it was 46th Street. Okay, this property is under control right now. Okay, but for the closing, we need to split this property, because this property has two, one house in the back. Okay, and we need to split the property in order to, you know, to close this deal. And I'm here because I try to help to Jorge this transaction, and how we can, we can close this transaction soon. So... I don't see understand what I tried to say, all right?
Maurice, do we have another image that shows the split itself?
Go ahead.
This is the only site plan we have. Is this the split?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, our neighborhood planner, Matthew Moss, would also like to talk about this lot split?
Great. Matt, can you add clarity to this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Very great. Thanks.
Excellent. So this was on the planning commission agenda a few weeks ago. It was tabled because generally, as when the staff review these lots splits, we want to have, we want to request easements, access easements, in case on parcel A, if there's ever a home that's torn down, it would require a front-loaded garage to be built if the future owner wanted car access. So we requested it be tabled, so I could work with Floria and the owner to discuss an easement over the driveway area. You can see it in the hash marked part of the site plan here. I worked with them to discuss how this easement should be done and drafted, and they worked with a surveyor to have the easement language written and drawn, as you see here. And it was, I reviewed it, it looks, looks good to me. And so I think they were ready to come back and present for your approval.
Matt, thanks for all your hard work. I know this was an interesting one.
I move approval.
We have a motion, second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck. And Matt, thanks a lot for your work. Conditional use permit in a pedestrian retail overlay district. This is for permanent parcel number 11409012. Address is 650 West 185th Street. Shannon, you presenting this one?
Yes. Shannon Leonard, City Planning. So this proposal here is for, to establish a CPR STNA training facility. You may remember from prior to COVID, we had a case come through for the exact same...
You have to turn that off now, John.
The exact same use for further up at 709 or 702 East 185th Street. It was for a store renovation program building. Unfortunately, the building owner ended up not going through SRP, and the lessee that was going to put the STNA center there no longer went with that location. So this is an actual different application, and a different applicant, and it's for this location at 650A. Next slide, please. Also to note that this area, as you know, East 185th, has a consultant, Ms. Laura Bala, who's been working with business owners, building owners, and the tenants alike, to try to bring people into line with the code and having permits. There's a lot of folks along this strip of East 185th that are not aware that they need permits for their uses, so they've already started operating. And unfortunately, the business owners haven't made it very clear that they need to have permits in place. So this is the case with this STNA school, where the applicant had already started conducting her business, put up signage, et cetera. So essentially, she just needs a conditional use here for the school, the training facility. It's considered an institutional use, and as such, needs a conditional use. Next slide, please. So this is the storefront here. Again, it's for an institutional use. Essentially, you just have to decide if that subject building was designed specifically for this type of use. Denial of this application will result in long-term vacancy, or the proposed use is needed in the immediate area. Next slide, please. So again, they simply just need the institutional use, conditional use at this location. I know that they are here also today for a design review regarding their signage. Initially, the signage covered every single window, which, as you know, is a glazing issue in the PRO. But I believe the design review and Ms. Bala was able to work with the applicant to find a suitable compromise. Any questions?
This is Olivia. I have a question.
Yes.
Is the front door the main entrance? Is it, is that where people enter off of 185th? Or is it from the rear?
It's my understanding that they would enter off of 185th Street through those doors that you see in this, in this picture here. Now, they may have a rear entry, but the applicant or Laura could explain further which door they plan on using.
Yeah, I think that would be important, whether that's just now being used as a false door versus, you know, having it be part of, you know, the way that people enter the business.
That's understandable. Yeah, it was my understanding that they would enter that door at that location. This site plan that you're seeing is what the applicant was able to retrieve from the building owner at this location that owns, I think, several buildings along East 185th. But it was my understanding from the design review that they'd be using that front door, which is why they weren't written up for needing a pedestrian frontage conditional use.
Shannon, I also noticed that there's one after this on the same street. Is this what you were talking about, you're going to be going through this and helping people obtain occupancies?
So Laura Bala, I believe, was hired by Councilman Polenzic and the Community Development Department to, and she could, I guess, give you more information about that, to really help East 185th come back to life. And I think in her process, she has learned that there's a lot of business building owners, as well as business owners within those buildings that are leasing, that are already operating but without the proper permits in place. And I believe it's part of her, part of her project is to help get these lessies and these building owners in compliance and get the occupancy permit. So that's why, within the last seven months, you've seen several cases here along East 185th Street for specific PRO uses.
Yes, and I'd also add to that, oh, I'm sorry. Hi, this is Sharonda Watley.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This is Sharonda Watley. I'm neighborhood planner with Cleveland City Planning Commission. And so I was just going to add that Laura has been extremely helpful with providing technical assistance to these business owners. She was gracious enough to come and give a presentation to the Northeast Design Review Committee about her work and her efforts just earlier this year. So we have been prepping the Design Review Committee as well to receive some of these retroactive permitting applications and things like that, so that these business owners can be legally permitted to operate and have their signage and things like that on their site.
Thank you. Laura, are you on the call?
Yes, we do. Laura Bala is on the call. And she is unmuted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you. Point of clarification, the business did not open yet, but they were close. It was when they put up the signage in the windows that I noticed the activity. And Mrs. Keisha Carter is on the line as well. She's been extremely easy to work with, responsive, and is doing her best to take care of all of these issues that she was unaware of, and her landlord did not inform her of, and the sign company who chose not to pull a permit. So we're working very hard to get her up and running in a part of the street that really needs some new life and new business.
Laura, my question for you then is, some of these people that did this without permits, how do they retroactively go through, especially when it comes to life safety? Are they acquiring an architect? Is staff doing that? How do they make sure that they comply from a building and hazard standpoint with life safety?
That's part of the occupancy permit process, just as City Planning Commission will review the conditional use. Building and housing will send out an inspector and make sure that they are completely in compliance with all safety issues.
All right, thank you. Commission members?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Councilman Sly had to step away just briefly to take an urgent phone call.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes, sorry.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Sounds like he stepped away.
Yeah, he had to step away.
Okay, good luck. The next one is for permanent parcel number 11413032. This is for 532 West 185th Street. So this is in the same area.
East.
It's East 185th.
East, I'm sorry. See what happens when you move to the west side? Everything becomes west.
We need, we need you to move east. We need, we need you to move east. Good morning, uh, Shannon Leonard here again. So just a little clarification, not every single owner that's come along East Hundred and Eighty-Fifth Street. Has opened, uh, prior to getting the permits. Some of, a lot of them have been retroactive, but a lot, some of them. Uh, including the two today have not actually opened their doors. Now, the signage did go up at six fifty A. Uh, prior to opening, but again, that was the contractor that did not get the proper permits. Um, but moving along on five thirty-two East Hundred and Eighty-Fifth Street, this is the existing. Uh, two parcels for this, uh, proposal here. Um, it's for a home share, uh, which is essentially an event venue. Uh, with some guest spaces on the ups, uh, on the second floor as well as office spaces. The applicant, um, his name is Ms., uh, Gatewood and her son. It's their hope to bring, uh, make this a community quite center for the neighborhood. Uh, as well as, uh, to do some co-working, and I'll walk through the different various programming and uses of this location. Um, you'll also notice this was initially one parcel, it's now been consolidated into two parcels. Uh, by the applicant to allow for a driveway as well as some parking. Uh, next slide, please. So essentially here, we have an expansion of an established former bar and restaurant use according to the certificate of disclosure that the applicant pulled. Uh, prior to purchasing this building. Uh, once she purchased it, she had, she did not realize, but she knows now that she has lots of conditional uses and variances that she's going to need. Uh, for her proposal here. Um, and so she's essentially wanting to use the second floor as guest lodging, so that would be for her different. Folks that are visiting that are here for spoken word or art galleries. Uh, offices in the basement, that would be for her business as well as her son who owns, uh, Gamers Haven. Uh, a little bit up the street from this area as well as, uh, the event venue with entertainment. And so the event venue is for. Uh, weddings, meetings, uh, small receptions, birthday parties. Spoken word, jazz bands, et cetera. Um, as well as having catering, and then outside she would like to do a seasonal market park on that front lot surface. So that front lot, surface lot. With, it was previously used as a parking lot, as you can see, it has all the bollards around it. Um, and she's, wants to just use this mostly for vending, um, for seasonal use. Also, under the PRO, as you know. Uh, place of assembly, which is an event venue, as we've seen in a couple other event venues that have been before you in the past couple of months. Um, that's considered an institutional use and as such needs a conditional use permit. Uh, next slide, please. So I'm just gonna go through these real quick, you kind of just look at them visually, and then, uh, Ms. Gatewood and her son. Uh, as well as the CDC can kind of elaborate more on their overall proposal and programming here. Uh, but they plan on doing catering and food sales, uh, different types of events, whether it's bu- uh, music, video. Trainings for children and adults, education, time management, uh, community support. So partnership with the local CDCs as well as the surrounding community, doing co-working, um. Whether that's working on graphic design and doing graphic design through her son's business or whatever have you. Um, the slides moved kind of fast, but I'll let the applicant go into further detail. Um, this is more detail. Can you go back, please? This is more detail about the market park, um, the outdoor market space, uh, initially when the applicant put the application in. Uh, in February, pre-COVID, we had, uh. Sharonda and I, as well as Laura Bala and the CDC have worked extensively. To walk with this applicant, trying to bring her as code compliant as possible for all of these uses. Um, I believe some of her funding has come from the community, uh, for this project, um, as well as they're currently raising funds. Uh, so initially, we had told them not to put the seasonal lot, uh, market park on the application. However, that was prior to COVID and I'm not knowing that they would not be able to get their main use permits until further down, uh, until now. Um, and so we ha- asked the applicant to go back and add that stuff, so. Uh, you'll see their site plan is still kind of, um, moving a little bit. They're working with design review and I can read into record with the Design Review Committee. Uh, here in a minute, but, uh, back to their conditional uses. Next slide, please. Um, and so the, there's several phases for this project, but the biggest things that, uh, Design Review wanted to focus on was what has to do with. Uh, the conditional uses in this case. So in this case, it's driveway across the public sidewalk. Um, they bought that additional property so that they could, uh, actually have, uh, people could park that were visiting their space. It's a landlocked property. Um, uh, later on, they hope to acquire the neighboring vacant property. Um, but right now they do not have funding, is my understanding. So the driveway across the public sidewalk. The conditions that they must meet is that the size, shape, or layout of the subject property does not permit placement of parking. Or loading of the driveway in a more suitable location, or it has been demonstrated by the applicant that the placement of parking, loading. Or driveway is allowed location would jeopardize the continued occupancy of the subject property. Uh, next slide, please. Um, again, this is the site plan, uh, they do need to go back to Design Review to figure out, um. They had been working with building and housing to figure out a good parking plan at this location. But again, this is really just for the driveway over the public sidewalk, um, as a site plan. Next, next slide, please. And again, these are the existing conditions, so the proposal here that they've been working with Design Review is to go in and repave this lot. Um, due to financial restrictions, they, they do not have the funding to remove all of those bollards. So a compromise that they had reached with Design Review was to go in and. Um, since this is not, since it's not gonna be used as a parking lot, it's gonna be used as an open lot for the market park. Go in and put a four-foot landscaping frontage strip, uh, with some hardy, uh, plants and shrubs along the front. You'll notice in the lower right picture, that is across the street and diagonal from this property. Um, that, that another property owner had you, did, uh, for those, the bollards surrounding their property. Uh, the picture on the left is a proposal that is still being worked out through Design Review for along the property line where the vacant. A building is there that you see on the far, uh, left-hand side of the screen, the tan vacant building with no windows. Um, but again, the, uh, they are working through Design Review with, with figuring out that fencing situation. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the other, uh, conditional use they need is for the institutional. An event venue is a place of assembly. Which under the PRO is considered an institutional use. Um, so these are existing conditions. This was a former bar restaurant. That was being used by the Fraternal Order of Eagles, uh, which is a social organization. Lodge for many, many years, um, I believe dating back to the fifties. Um, and so essentially, uh, to give them that institutional use, uh, for the event venue was a subject building. Space designed specifically for this type of use, was the denial of this application lead to long-term vacancy? Or the proposed use is needed in the immediate area. Uh, next slide, please. So these are the two conditional uses they need, driveway across a public sidewalk and the institutional conditional use. I will read into the record. The Design Review, uh, information from the August fourth, August eighteenth and the, uh, followed-up email. Um, so Design Review Committee is generally supportive of all of the uses and programming that are proposed and intended for this site. As of today, they have approved the project as of yesterday with the following conditions. With an agreement that this project comes back to Northeast Design Review for confirmation of design direction. Following the outcome of the decision made by the Planning Commission. Revised the presentation materials to be clear in a tent without mixing the previous design iterations with the latest design. By removing items that are no longer relevant and specific materials proposed for the frontal landscaping str- strip, so the plant type spacing quantities. Also, Councilman Polenzic expressed verbal support of this project and programming at the Virtual Design Review Committee on August fourth. While Jamar Doyle from the Greater Collin would express verbal support of the Gateway Home Share at the Virtual Design Re- Committee on Tuesday, August eighteenth. Um, and so with that being said, typically, we would not bring the, uh, case here to, uh, Planning Commission. Without a complete project from Design Review, however, this application has been in the pipeline since, uh, February. And so we wanted to assure that, uh, Ms. Gatewood and her family could get, uh, due process in a timely manner. Uh, to hopefully obtain some decisions today.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak?
Hello. Um, first, thanks for, for doing this for us. We, we, um, we're really excited about the project and we. Kind of really want to get it started. A lot of our, um, businesses that we support are looking to get started, so. Um, Shannon covered everything pretty well for us, and, and I really appreciate that. And that's, I really don't have anything to say unless someone has questions.
Hi, I'm Robert. Um, I'll do a little bit of, uh, detailing on the programming bit. So yeah, the space is n- is probably gonna operate a lot in terms of generating revenue as an event space for. Private and family use and, and, uh, institution older folks, but the co. Is kind of what got us thrust, what we were doing at eight eighteen across from La Salle. Um, so we expect a lot of educational use, families, all levels of families, kids, parents, their parents being able to access the space. And use it regularly, so as the slides showed, um, we really do believe that. Market space, um, especially during the pandemic, uh, coupled with limited use of the inside space in the next two. If the, hopefully, um, supportive of a lot of the good activity that's happening. So I just wanna thank Jamar and, and Shannon and Sharonda and everybody, Laura. And our councilmen for being really supportive. We've been, it's a long time coming and we've been, uh, really excited to get there, yeah.
Thank you very much. Commission members, questions?
Mr. Chairman, we have, uh, Liz Kukla with her hand raised.
Morning, Liz.
Good morning. Hi, I am calling as a, um, resident. I live approximately two hundred feet away from this. I caught wind of it because. I am a, um, city employee, um, there were, there wasn't any public notice on this, um, for this particular conditional use, and I. I understand that, um, that might not be part of the procedure, uh, regarding these reviews and a PRO. Um, so that is what it is, but, um, I'm concerned a little bit about the. The words bar and, um, the, the live entertainment, um, only that I live so close to it and. I'm concerned about, um, the impact, the, the noise and, um, such, and so I was wondering if we can get more detail. On the hours of operation and if there are gonna be any, um. Programming on that back deck and if they're proposing any screening to help buffer. Any noises that we'll hear from, uh, live entertainment. I'm concerned that there'll be concerts and stuff. Of course, that's like the worst-case scenario because. What I'm seeing looks fantastic, you know, it looks like a very nice. Um, you know, small programming, event center, um, but again, this could become something bigger. Um, and I just, again, I have questions about the hours of operation and such, and if there'd be any programming or screening or anything like that. Thank you.
Good question, Liz.
Uh, so I'll take that, uh, approach because I handle a lot of the programming. So relative to that deck, we don't necessarily expect there to be live music, and when we say. Live music, we don't use the word bar because that's not the intent. It, just like we had up the street at eighteen, uh, if somebody, be it in our gallery or a birthday party, has adult beverages, it would be interior. If it's exterior on the deck, it would be, uh, numbers that are probably less than thirty, forty. We're not looking at gigantic things. But we don't expect to create more noise, um, than any of our neighbors at C bars or the Blue Ribbon. Or when we were up the street, how the La Salle was able to do it. We're not expecting it to be that, because that's not the nature of the, uh, gatherings that we end up holding.
Yeah, and to that the bar part, we're actually about service for all of these that we do inside. We really, it's not a walk-off-of-the-street, um, type of bar. So we do provide the all-inclusive service for someone to come in. So that part and then any, um, live entertainment would be mainly in the front. Um, uh. And, you know, we won't operate, I'm really a, we're a small intimate venue-type place, so eleven o'clock at the latest. If we are holding events outside due, due to COVID for the social distancing part. Is, um, is what we'll be doing, but, and that's not on an everyday basis, because most of the programming will take place on the inside. We, we support up-and-coming, um. Open mic events, uh, spoken word events like that, and the place is equipped with a stage, so that's where most of our. Uh, entertainment will be happening. We, we do intend on getting some type of screening, um, for the back deck. And if anything's to go on out there, I'm, I'm gonna probably apply for the outdoor dining if I have to, if we're required to do that. Course, eat as a place to eat outside, but other than that is, we're not going to move into any other direction. Other than what we've been doing now, because our business is basically to be a home base for other. Small businesses, creatives and makers in the neighborhood. All of the, the one in our neighborhood. We, you know, we really are a neighborhood person. He's, he's on the board. I give the, on the board to our CDC. We work close with Jamar and really close with my councilman, Mary Louise, so everything we're doing here is specifically. Pretty hub-type place, and I don't, we're not gonna veer off into another direction.
I will say for, um, argument's sake, though, just to be, um, crystal clear, if someone were to rent our space for like a birthday party and they had music. We're going to have, because we live in this neighborhood, I wouldn't want that sort of, um, nuisance too, because I can see houses and see people on their deck. From our deck. Uh, we would be considerate of that. Um, any events we host will be notified through the public. We're trying to get better at making sure, uh, talk to John and getting in the Collinwood Observer. But we put it online, public events will be known by the neighborhood, and private events, we're gonna try and keep a really tight lid on, so. I, I wouldn't suspect it to become a bar. We're not a bar.
We're not a bar, no.
All right. Mr. Chairman, we also have, uh, Jamar Doyle and then, uh, Director Collier with their hands raised.
Jamar?
All right, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioners, and, uh, again, full disclosure, Robert, uh, is a board member of Greater Collinwood Development. This is Jamar Doyle, Executive Director there, and I just wanted to, um, respond, uh, to Liz and the, uh, Commission's, uh, uh, questions. And, and the one thing that I think, uh, gives the Development Corporation, um, you know, the, the, um. The impetus to support is the fact that the Gatewoods have been in operation on this street at eight eighteen for approximately three years. With a very similar concept directly across the street from the La Salle Theater, which you all know. Uh, was developed by, uh, Greater Collinwood's predecessor, Northeast Shores Development. Uh, they were across the street from that major investment, and we have heard no complaints. From any of the residents along La Salle Avenue in the neighborhood that sits directly behind their previous location. So, uh, I can say that based on that experience, uh, they really have been a neighborhood asset. In terms of bringing in line dancing and healthy activities, healthy food. Um, when there were private events, yes, there was alcohol, but again, we did not have any complaints. From any of the residents that were directly behind their facility at eight eighteen, so I have, uh. No reason to believe that, uh, anything, um, of that nature would happen, uh, as they move up to. Uh, uh, their, uh, newer location, uh, north on East one hundred and eighty-fifth Street. I'm actually sad to see them go. From across the street from the La Salle, uh, they added vibrancy, um, but to that, uh, same token, I am glad that. Uh, number one, they're residents in the neighborhood, number two, they are still on one hundred and eighty-fifth, and, uh, three, as Shannon mentioned. They will now activate a more, um, uh, a dead section of the street and bring some, some, uh, vitality. As well as, uh, some eyes on the street, uh, to this northern section of one hundred and eighty-fifth. Thank you.
Chairman, I also wanna point out. I wanted to point out that the Councilman, uh, Councilman Polenzic does support this. Assistant is on the phone, uh, if she, if there's any additional questions, and then Mr. Collier.
Director?
Yes, I wanna just say a couple of things. First and foremost, you know, I think this is a very productive use, uh, particularly. You know, at a time like this, uh, where you have a street that has, uh, had seen some, uh, vacancy. And needs value restored back to it, and anything, uh, that can help to build community, I think is a plus. Um, the one question that I have is wanting to understand when the, uh, business plans to open. Uh, you know, given COVID nineteen, um, and when we talk about, uh, venues such as this, bringing people together, just wanting to make sure. That, um, there is, uh, compliance with all of our COVID nineteen mandates during this time. Because I, I really would like to see this business succeed and continue to thrive, you know, beyond the current, uh, situation with the pandemic.
Thanks for saying all that, Freddie, I appreciate you. Um, so yeah, in terms of COVID, we're hyper vigilant about. That my, my mother has been working with a couple of our previous coworking partners at Consulta Code and picked up our PPE from Upstart. We've created a pretty rough idea of what internal space we use, but. Uncomfortable a month ago. We're a little more comfortable, but the whole point was to get something outside, because we could space at ten feet. Uh, it, it wasn't mentioned specific. It wasn't mentioned specifically in, in the market park, that's fully inclusive. Meaning if we do a flea market, we're providing tents, tables, seats, advertising. And we'll create the spacing. This isn't going to be something where a hundred vendors pick places. We'll make sure everything spaced appropriately. As far as dates, with you guys' support and, and we get everything lined up as far as being compliant and ordinance as needed. We're knock on wood targeting Brown Sunday, September thirteenth. But it would, we, we. Sure, we handled everything at the city and county levels with food and liquor license and all of these rules we need to make sure we were following. But as soon as we get that, expect emails from us inviting all of you all, if you're able to come, to see what we're trying to put in the, in the neighborhood. Yeah. Compliance is mandatory and we're very stick, very much sticklers about it. Even though we're together, we keep masks around, we give masks away, we'll be selling them. Hand sanitizer everywhere, spacing requirements are, we're going more to eight to ten feet than six feet just to be safe. Because we want to, we, this is a Robert thing. The ventilation concern for me. It, spacing is important, but we, we can't be completely sure that we're mitigating enough risk by letting people indoor. So getting outside going is kind of the number one thing. And as soon as more information's available, then we'll start trying to get stuff indoors.
Thank you. Commission members?
Move approval Downing.
Second. Motion and second. Further discussion? Call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Light.
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck looking for.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We move on to mandatory referrals. This next one, ordinance number five nine eight dash twenty twenty. This is the one for the district one dollars and hiring A E com for technical advisors. We tabled this last time. As far as I remember, I had to do with what was happening with bike paths and, and articulating that idea more. Is this something we're going to look at today?
Yes.
Who's going, who's going to be presenting?
Well, we have Ms., we have Ms. Vargas from the city. And also we have Callie Mersman and Sharonda Watley from our staff, who is also going to be providing some commentary. And if I can provide a little bit of context, Mr. Chairman, before we go into this. One of the, one of the things, I'm sorry.
You can do that after the director says his comments.
Thank, thank you so much. So one of the things that we wanted to do today was share with the commission what was going on with respect to the actual T L C I proposal and what was proposed. And also being very sensitive to Mrs. Curry's comments at the last meeting. I wanted to talk about the bicycle infrastructure on this street and the surrounding area to better articulate the multimodal activities that are happening in this geography. So I just wanted to provide that context as to what the, this discussion would be. So you're going to get a lot more robust discussion and detail around those items.
Thank you, Director. Now I'll take a motion to remove from the table.
So move to remove it from the table Downing.
Curry.
Motion is second. Call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Light.
Yes.
Okay, who's speaking first? Ms. Vargas? Maurice, do we know who's going to speak first?
I do not. She is online. We can hear, can you speak? You're unmuted?
Okay, yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I believe Rick was going to present on, present on, on this if he's on. I know he was having some audio problems. So, so Rick, are you, are you on?
Do you see him Maurice?
I do see him, Rick. You just muted yourself. You're, now you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, there's a lot of feedback.
Are you, are you on the phone as well as on your computer?
How about now? Is that better?
Yes.
I apologize for all the issues I've been having. Terrible time with Webex lately. Hi, this is Rick Swetalski. I manage the Division of Engineering Construction. I'll make the presentation on the East eight hundred eighty fifth street project. Just a little background, this is altogether, it's basically two phase project extending from Nottingham to the lake. Phase one is a project that is being done sponsored by the City of Euclid in conjunction with the City of Cleveland. That's from Pawnee to the lake. And the second phase is Nottingham to Pawnee, which is the city's project. Just getting to the T L C I that kind of gives the basis of what we wanted to look at over here. Can you stay on that slide for a second, please? Go back one. Nope, the other way. There you go. Thank you. This is a T L C I that was completed back in, I believe it was May two thousand seventeen and presented to the Planning Commission and approved by the Planning Commission in two thousand seventeen November. Two little tidbits from that T L C I is that the project itself is a public improvements are intended to create a unique and walkable neighborhood commercial district, which will turn attract private investment and new businesses. The application of brick sheroes on the existing one hundred eighty fifth street project is recommended. The study implementation and what we're looking for funding is that at this point in time, one of our many funding sources, we hope will be the Ohio Public Works Commission. Those applications are due from both the City of Euclid and the City of Cleveland in September. So we'll know about funding being available sometime early next year. Altogether, these two projects, about six, six and a half million dollars each. Okay, next slide, please. This is a cross section that was recommended by a T L C I. It's a forty foot wide street. Parking lanes on both sides, twelve foot drivelines. Both sides have wide sidewalk area due to all the businesses that are there. And noting at the bottom is the sheroes that are shown that was recommended by the plan. Next slide, please. So you saw the concept that was, the design that was contained within the T L C I. Here we're looking at the part of phase one and you can see many of the elements that are contained within there. The bike racks, trash receptacles, benches, high visibility crosswalk, manatee strip, trees, all new sidewalks and the concrete bus pads. Next, please. The next couple of slides are just going to give you an idea of what East one hundred eighty fifth street looks like with a lot of businesses fronting the street itself. We're looking at East one hundred eighty feet, eighty fifth and Kawani. Next, please. One hundred eighty fifth and Cornwall. And the final shot is of East one hundred eighty fifth and Pawnee, I believe. Which is the, the demarcation line between phase one and phase two of the project. We can go on. This schematic shows you where we're at in the process of the old guy's development, project development. Since federal dollars are being, are involved in this project, we are following this, this methodology. At this time, we're trying to move into the preliminary engineering and that's what the, we're here trying to get authorization to do besides applying for issue one money. And during the planning stage, we looked at a number of documents and especially in terms of what type of bike facility would be contained on one hundred eighty fifth street. Looked at the T L C I, completing green streets typology, bikeway master plan, Cuyahoga Greenway Plan, the WACAS Regional Bike Network. Next, please. As a result, and specifically trying to provide a visual for this meeting, we put together a scorecard trying to show what sources were in agreement with shared use lanes, bike lanes or protected lanes. So we basically have three here colored balls, green, yellow, red, blue, appropriate most cases, appropriate some, not recommended or undetermined. Next, please. So we always saw that the T L C I recommends sheroes, but if we go on to the next slide, please. This is the completing green streets Cleveland, completing green streets typology plan. It shows a street of this nature, which is a medium commercial street thirty to forty eight feet wide. We have a forty foot wide roadway here. They look at two options as being the most viable for some facility of this nature. And in both options, A and B, sheroes are recommended. There, there is a third option C that would, so that would have bike lanes on it. That would be without any parking at all in the street. Over to T L C I recommended street parking. So we believe that option B is the one we want to go with and that has sheroes in it. Next slide, please. East one hundred eighty fifth street and the two thousand sixteen Cleveland Bike Way Master Plan is designated as sheroes. Next slide, please. And then the WACAS Regional Bike Way Network, it is also recommended for sheroes. Next slide, please. And the Cuyahoga County Greenway Network, there is no designation for that street. So I guess in summary, as we're looking at it, as we're trying to move into design and be able to submit our applications to OPWC in a timely manner. We wholeheartedly believe that the scope would include sheroes for this project. So with that, we ask that the planning committee reconsider the ordinance and authorize us to move on so that we can get the council and get approval and move this project forward as it's a very much needed project for the area. As I mentioned, it's a thirteen million dollar investment. Thank you. I'm ready to answer questions or if anyone else has comments.
Thank you, Rick. Commission members, questions?
Just curious, the councilman and the CDC also support?
Chairman, we also have Sharonda with their hand raised.
Say that again?
We have Sharonda Watley with her hand raised.
Go ahead, Sharonda.
Hi, everyone. Morning again. I'm Sharonda Watley, Cleveland City Planning. I just wanted to add some additional context in terms of the study that was done for East one hundred eighty fifth street. So it was very unique in that the study area connected the City of Euclid and the City of Cleveland. So the county was the sponsor for this particular study. And so all of the appropriate agencies and cities have either adopted or accepted this study as the guiding plan for East one hundred eighty fifth street. So we did have robust community engagement. We actually started our community engagement at the end of winter and we still had triple digit numbers of folks participating in the middle of winter for this particular study. And so the recommendations from that study do recommend sheroes. Maurice, if you could go back to the intersection of one hundred eighty fifth and Pawnee. Yeah, one more slide. Yeah. So what you're seeing are screen grabs of how the street was functioning up until a year ago. And so this is in the first or phase one of implementation. But if we looked at also the area for phase two, you would see similar images in terms of the amount of on-street parking that is in demand for these businesses. East one hundred eighty fifth street is very unique in that there is a strong building facade line that incapacitates about eight blocks. So when we were doing this study, we compared this commercial district and corridor to several other commercial districts and corridors in the City of Cleveland. And so one thing that kind of bubbled to the top was that this was really unique in that there was so much of densely packed commercial storefronts and businesses at that time. And so again, driving up and, up and down the street, you will definitely see tons of off-street parking, I'm sorry, on-street parking. It is being used by the businesses and the patrons of those establishments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Director Collier has his hand raised. Then we have Callie Mersman and Jamar Doyle.
Just to provide some additional context with respect to how we are viewing these projects. And I just want to thank our colleagues in the Mayor's Office of Capitol Projects because we are really integrating planning as well as, you know, mocap together. And doing that more so than we've ever have, at least since I've been here for the last twenty years. And in this city, we have what we call a hierarchy of trails and options for cyclists. Sheroes, dedicated trails, bike lanes. And different streets require different types of treatments. And the typology plan starts to lay that out. So we've been utilizing that as a script stencil, for lack of a better word, on what we try to apply. The other thing that we always consider is density, which Sharonda very eloquently laid out the dense nature of one eighty fifth. And one of the things that Callie is going to talk about is how these other networks dovetail that. When you think about the bicycle facility system in the city, you almost have to look at it like a vehicular network in the sense that you have highways, you have primary corridors, you have residential streets, et cetera. So we are trying to establish that similar sort of hierarchy of, of bicycle options to citizens of the City of Cleveland. It just so happens that one eighty fifth is a shero scenario. And many of you all know that cyclists are able to ride in the street already by law. What the shero strapping does is help to help drivers understand that better as well as cyclists to understand and make that more explicit. So this is an enhancement with respect to the cyclists. I'm going to turn it over to Callie to talk to you a little bit more about this particular geography. Thank you.
Thanks. Maurice, could you flip to the last slide?
The next slide?
The, the last one.
Okay.
So as Director Collier said, as we are planning bicycle connectivity across the city, we're really looking at it in a network context and trying to link up bicycle connections so that people can get from where they're starting to where they want to go. That also includes an all ages and abilities focus on low stress bicycle connections. So as you can see here, highlighted in the Cuyahoga County Greenway Plan adjacent to East one eighty fifth street in the red, you can see the bike lanes that exist on Lake Shore Boulevard as well as the Purple Trail, Euclid Creek Trail connecting from Metro Parks Euclid Creek Reservation to the lakefront. And so I just wanted to highlight those two things. Again, the Lake Shore bike lanes are existing. The Euclid Creek Trail is in the planning process and is a priority of the Metro Parks that the city is working with to implement. There are also additional opportunities on adjacent streets to provide additional bicycle connection and wayfinding assistance to that commercial corridor of Euclid Fifth Street that we can continue to develop over the course of this project. The final thing that I will say is that there is a bus line on East one eighty fifth street. And so the, to the director's point of needing to accommodate multiple modes in, and, and along the same corridor and also the same area, those are, those are things that we weigh in terms of the spatial needs and how to support all of those modes with infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, we now have Jamar Doyle and Mary Louise from the councilman's office.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to first say thank you because this has been, as Sharonda mentioned earlier, a labor of love for several years now, going from the planning phase through implementation. And as was mentioned, East one hundred eighty fifth street is a very unique street. It is the spine of one of our key commercial corridors. And as such, it is densely populated and still maintains intact building wall. And right now, I also have to say though, the street is at a critical juncture and is fragile in terms of the businesses that are there. And it's only, the fragility of the street has only been highlighted by what we're facing in COVID. And so one of the things that, that, and why sheroes were, you know, part of the T L C I recommendation as we went through, as Sharonda said, that extensive community process and engagement is because the businesses do need that on-street parking. There is not a lot of, not a lot of the buildings have, you know, side or rear parking. So really, visitors to the institutions and to the businesses on that street rely on parking along East one hundred eighty rely on parking along East 185th Street to patronize those businesses. And I believe charos, as the director has mentioned, are really the best answer in terms of striking a compromise to accommodate multi-modes of transportation as well as being able to accommodate bike infrastructure and still support on-street parking and grant multiple access points for the businesses so that people can drive to those businesses, they can bike to those businesses, they can catch the bus to those businesses. We really want to make sure that we're accommodating all of those modes. And I support the recommendation of city planning and the recommendations that are laid out in the TLCI study that we would have charos on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission members?
Mr. Chairman, we still have Mary Louise, and August has his hand raised also.
That's okay. Mary Louise Justick Daly from Councilman Plante's office. Just to add, everybody's been so articulate in their comments in regards to this project. And everybody has worked so hard so far on this. But as Jamar said, East 185th Street is a commercial corridor, and we cannot forget about the businesses, even though the focus on this seems to be on the bikes and the bicycle routes. Like Jamar said, and the councilman is always out there, you know, to reemphasize, again, it's a commercial corridor, and we can't forget to pay attention to the cars and the buses that are also on that street. Because if we anger them or make it impossible for them to get up and down the street, then the businesses suffer. So in this respect, that's one of the reasons why, from the very beginning, the councilman had said charos was the only way to go on this street. And I'm glad to see that everybody else, all the other organizations and bicycle organizations, understand that. But again, the councilman has been, you know, engaged with this project from the very, very beginning. And we, as we set up a new timeline as we move forward.
August, I think I had my hand raised, Maurice.
Yes, I called you out.
Here's what I would like to advocate for future, for the future, is when a TLCI is before us, this background information is provided as a basis of design. Because I think we probably could have avoided where we are now had we been informed how this ties back to the overall plan and vision of the city. So I think that would be my recommendation for the future.
Agreed.
We have no other hands raised at this point, Mr. Chairman.
I move.
I move approval downing.
Second, Paul.
Motion second, further discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone. I know I asked to hear more information and appreciate this and actually understand it and understand the complexity of the conflict with on-street parking. And so I do understand it. I do hope, though, in the future, that we don't sort of take major thoroughfares and assume that parking and bike lanes are actually in conflict. And what I mean by that is that the activation of, especially, I think, I personally think 185th is pretty chuffing and could be a charming street, that even though it carries a lot of traffic, it doesn't carry as much as it used to. And so, you know, I mean, I'm not going to stand in the way of this, but I do think it's a huge missed opportunity for a pretty vibrant place. So I just want to say that I do wish, actually, we had, to August's point, seen this earlier and that the directive in the planning wasn't so early that, you know, you couldn't have a situation where you had one row of on-street parking and even balanced design. I think in the future, it's a missed opportunity. But as I said, I'm not going to stand in the way of it, and I do appreciate the context, but it's a pretty big stretch. So thank you.
To follow with Lillian's point, I was just dropped my son off at Syracuse University a couple of weeks ago, and they had a dedicated bike line laying on one side, both ways, and they parked on the other side of the street. There's ways to manage it. I just, I know where we are now, but in the future, I think we should consider it to Lillian's point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Director Collier has his hand raised again.
Doesn't.
Yeah, I'm not going to belabor this, because I know we want to move through the agenda. But just to Commissioner Curry and to Commissioner Fluker's point, Commissioner Curry knows this well, you know, pushing for this whole multimodal culture shift and how we fund these projects, how we see the right-of-way and the number of users that are going to be in the right-of-way. I think it's something that we have to continue to keep our feet on the gas on. And I think like Commissioner Curry, you know, this push even with 66th Street and trying to push that to be like, stretch it to be what we believe in our hearts it could be. We often have to, you know, wait for the system to kind of catch up. And I think that that is happening right now. You know, there's an infrastructure bill that's going to be coming down the pipe that has some very interesting requirements. And now we're starting to see NAWACA and funding tied to some of these values. That's where I think you're going to really start to see it happen more fluidly. Where you're not, we're not advocating, but the funding mechanisms are in place that's going to require us to think about our streets in a certain way. So it'll force the system to shift. And I think many of us have been like ahead of that as advocates. And I think that's where the frustration lies. But we're seeing it, you know, and I just want to ensure you that I think we are all on the same page and all working towards that goal.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if Mary Louise wanted to make another comment?
No, I just, I understand what Commissioners Curry and Fluker are saying. But on 185th, when you have businesses on both sides of the street, you can, no parking lots per se, you've got to really look at the parking availability. And cutting parking on one side of the street, the councilman will not approve of that, nor will the businesses.
All right, thank you.
I would like to move to approve.
We have a motion, Mr. Director.
We have a motion.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, Michael, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
No.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to ordinance number 444-2020. Authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to issue a permit to Haddas Windowpane LLC to encroach into the public right-of-way of Prospect Avenue by installing, using, and maintaining one emblem brass medallion, one trash receptacle, four bronze benches, eight bronze, and nine concrete planters. Is Rick here to speak to this one?
Yes, I believe, Mr. Sutowski.
Yes, I'm here again, thank you. This project is a renovation and adaptive reuse of the historic May Company Building that fronts on Public Square and backs up to Prospect Avenue. Buildout is over three hundred, three hundred one and two-bedroom suites, which will greatly help the downtown area and bring in more people. You can see on the plan there, this shows, and I know it's small, but it does show all of the amenities that they're intend on putting in. The legend is there too. But if you go to the next slide, it's a close-up of several sections that give you a better idea where some of the areas go. You can see the entrance way that has the May Company brass plaque that we placed there, putting the gray concrete in those areas that you see that are grayed out, using a lot of prominent planks for the entrance way. If you go to the final slide, you can see some of these items that will be proposed to use. And it looks like a nice project to really take care of the May Company building and give it a facelift.
Questions?
I move approval downing.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Fluker.
You're muted, sir.
Director Curry.
Oh, sorry, I'm still on mute, yes.
Paul.
Yes.
And slide.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution number 446-2020, declaring the intent to vacate portions of Lorain Court.
We have Rick again.
Thank you again. The purpose of this request is to vacate a small remaining piece of Lorain Court between West 48th Street and the rest of the vacated Lorain Court, as requested by the Urban Community School. That's actually a parking lot still sitting there. And they're just trying to clean up the property titles and asking for that to be vacated, which we support.
Mission members?
Move approval downing.
Second.
Second slide.
Motion second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Yes.
Thank you. Administrative approvals, please take a look, and I'll take a motion when you're ready.
Move approval downing.
Second, Fluker.
Motion second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Yes.
Curry.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Yes.
Okay, we move on to design review. The first one was near West. This is Dollar General, new construction, seeking final approval. This is at 5063 Memphis Avenue. This one was tabled, and there was a moratorium. Director, do you want to? What's going on with this one?
Yes, thank you. So as discussed, this particular matter, if you can put on your mute, if you can mute your microphones in the background, please. Thank you so much. Please mute your microphone, thank you. So this particular matter was tabled at a previous planning commission meeting. And it was stated in the tabling or during the tabling that this had a lot to do with the moratorium that was placed. We have worked with our law department and have determined that the application for this particular case was actually put in prior to the moratorium. The action, however, by the commission was such that the moratorium was part of the narrative with respect to the ultimate decision. So we are rehearing this case at the behest of our law department to look at the development proposal. There are a number of individuals who will be weighing in on this case who have concerns about this particular project. And we want to make sure that the development entity has the opportunity to go through their due process and for us to be able to hear the proposal in its entirety. It has gone through the Design Review Committee, but there will be some articulation of some of the concerns associated with the project. So we're here today to allow for the actual viewing of the entire project and hear the proposal. Thank you.
Okay, I would take a motion from the table.
Remove.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to remove from the table. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker. Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Yes.
Okay, it's removed from the table. All the presenters, I'll need to swear you in. So if you could raise your right hand, you soundly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do. I do. I do.
Can you state your name when you say I do?
Mitchell Pappin, the developer. Dean Spong with Vokon, the architect representing the developer. And Brian Rubenstein with Vokon. Bill Boran from Langen. Anthony Coyne, land use counsel to the developer.
Okay, who's going to start this off, please?
My name is Mitchell Pappin. I'm the Dollar General developer. My company is MSP Properties of Ohio LP. I have with us on the call Bill Boran from Langen Engineering, who's my engineer, Dean Sponge and Brian Rubenstein, who are my Vokon architects. And then I have Tony Coyne from Memphis Avenue, who is my land use attorney, who's helping me with code-compliancing. I'm going to have Dean Sponge from Vokon go through the slideshow. And if he can't answer any questions, I'll answer them and we'll go from there. So it's all yours, Dean. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. So we are obviously here to describe a proposed development at the corner of West 56 and Memphis Ave. Address is 5617, as we've been described. Next slide. The proposed location is currently a block west of Fulton Ave and is situated between Streets West 56 and West 57. Next slide, please. Look here, it's like contextual. The building, the property is positioned next to Metro Cleveland Security to the west, a local bar to the east, and a McDonald's to the north. Next slide, please. Here is some existing property images from Google showing the vacant parcel. I believe it's been vacant for close to twelve years, if that's correct. Next slide, please. Closer contextual site plan of the current survey identifying the four properties that are in question here. The lots are currently zoned, local retail. And the proposed use of the building is approved under that ordinance. Next slide, please. This is an image provided by our client, just to give you some image, contextual imaging of what the building would look like on the site as we go through the rest of this deck. Next slide, please. Site plan here proposed, obviously, has the building position in the northeast corner, positioned within all of the required setbacks. We're showing the hardscape versus landscape in the proposed planting locations and trees along the site. We're identifying, you know, the parking requirements that I'll get into when we look at the site plan a little bit more detail. But this shows hard versus soft landscape and the sidewalk connection from the building out to Memphis Ave as well as the bike path, I'm sorry, the bike racks. Next slide, please. This is, again, just some of the planting that we'd be proposing for screening and to general aesthetics on the property. Next slide, please. Site photometrics indicating that most of the primary lighting will be coming from the building. The site does have one pole, one single head pole facing the property along the west parking line, west parking curb line. Next slide, please. And here is a more detailed site plan identifying the circulation, the proposed circulation, the parking count, which is at twenty-three spaces, nine-by-twenty parking spaces, two eighty-eight. It identifies the circulation from the site, primary circulation coming in off of Memphis Ave. And the truck circulation is actually. And the truck circulation is actually coming in from Memphis Ave down West Fifty-Sixth through the property and back out. And the West Fifty-Sixth curb cut is a enter only, so you will not be exiting back out onto West Fifty-Sixth from this side. The southern property line also has a six-foot tall privacy vinyl screening fence that the client will be providing to help separate screening from the retail property and the residencies to the south. Next slide, please. This is just a building footprint, giving you a little bit more understanding of the building orientation and the interior layout. Again, this is just for reference, identifying that the building square footage is roughly seventy-five hundred square feet. And next slide, please. So these are the building elevations showing the two-toned brick masonry building between a darker toned brick and a lighter toned brick. The lighter toned brick is in slight relief. The higher piece, the higher entry piece of this building is roughly twenty-one feet to the top of coping and the lower piece, which is a parapet wall on all three sides, giving full screening to the building, is at eighteen feet to the top of coping. The entry has clear glazing storefront system with the bronze storefront system. And the primary entry at the, at the west facade, sliding glass door, same as clear entry with a bronze storefront system. The punched windows that you see along the facade are false windows with spandrel glazing. They are clear glazing with spandrel paint behind it. Every punched window is, has a pre-engineered metal awning, also bronze to match the rest of the pre, I'm sorry, the rest of the pre-finished items such as the coping, the awnings, the downspouts and gutters and the light fixtures surrounding the building. Next slide, please. You can see here on the eth elevation how the parapet height is trying to screen the two mechanical rooftop units. The roof is pitching to West Fifty-Sixth and that is the direction that the gutters and downspouts are heading. Next slide, please. This gives you a little bit of example of the color tones that we're looking at for the building. Again, natural brick, two different color types, all of the metal items are a bronze. This gives you an indication of what the proposed fence would look like. And again, these are the wall pack fixtures above the awnings, security lights and the head of the light pole, all would be bronze as well. Next slide, please. These are the black and white elevations, giving a little bit more detailed information related to any specific finishes and heights associated with the building. Next slide. At this point, I will be turning the presentation back over to the client, MSP Properties, to describe a little bit more of the business case and interior programming.
Okay, so this is considered a Dollar General urban store, it's an eighty-five by eighty-five building. So with this store, they have a different modern feel to it, which is different from their other stores. This is all painted gray on the inside with white ceiling and polished floor. Next slide, please. The big difference with this store is it'll be the first store in Cleveland, dollar store that has produce. Dollar General listened to your guys' health concerns and are putting produce in the store. I can read a list of the produce. There's bananas, avocados, tomatoes, garlic, potatoes, onions, lemons, grapes, lettuce salad, garden bag salads, bagged romaine lettuce. There's salsa, there's blueberries, strawberries, apples, oranges, pretty produce you can think of. There's yogurt, pretzel snacks and sesame snacks to go. So, next slide, please. The other thing with this store is there's thirty-three colored doors that are perishable items with eggs, milk, meats, frozen vegetables, healthy items, next, please. It's also a little different, they have a self-serve area with a slushy machine, so customers can come in, get a slushy machine, they can get a coffee to go. It's a nice customer feel. Next, please. This is what it will look like with a new wood paneling background. Next, please. So that's the store on Kinsman in Kinsman and it's very similar to this store. As for that store, they don't have any produce and if you look at the Google reviews, it is very highly evaluated by their customers and they liked it a lot more than any other dollar store. And with this store, it's going to be very clean and have a good, healthy vibe to it. Next, please. You just keep going, keep going, keep going. And then here's some of the brand items that they sell. So, next slide, that's it, I believe. Any questions?
Dean, do you have in your deck something that shows this building in context with the surrounding?
Only the conceptual rendering. And it's very isolated to the specific property.
Yeah. All right, commission members.
I have a question for Director Collier. Director, so I, I believe you defined, the law department indicated that this application was pre, was pre-moratorium. So therefore, that's why we're hearing it and we have to render, render an opinion. Correct. It's relevance, okay. Correct. That's the only reason why it's here from a legal perspective. A couple of things I do want to say and I'll wait to after the council president and others provide their commentary. I just kind of give some context from a staff perspective. Want to just make sure that you have everything that you need to render the best possible decision as we make this determination today, because this is very important. So I'm going to yield to the chair to call on the individuals who seek to speak.
Yeah, so we're, you'll call him out as you see him with the raised, hands raised, but the one thing I don't see is the building in context with the surroundings, which typically see.
Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Kelly with his hand raised.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make the point that we're, we're here and there's really, wasn't, I mean, I appreciate it, of course, but there's really no showing us what the hearings look like or what the elevation are, because they're all the same. And Dollar General has different concepts that might be acceptable completely, but this is the same presentation essentially that we saw from ago. And the community lack of support does not change. Just, you know, other than we're trying to split a technicality, the moratorium started, you know, just to see if the moratorium was put in place for a purpose. And that's because we were responding to a problem that we saw in the city of Cleveland. So, you know, I, I understand what is, that we're trying to get this in under the former set of rules. But in terms of the spirit of what the council did, this, this still doesn't fit. I want to continue to encourage the, you know, planning department and council to work together to, to come up with the comprehensive legislation on how we deal with these types of small box retail. But my position is the same as it was a few months ago, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we still have Mr. Collier with his hand raised. Did you have another comment or Director Collier? Yes, I do want to provide some kind, I believe you may have it in your slide deck and I'm going to ask Shannon B to kind of talk about this. A couple of key things that I think we have to be mindful of and this relates to, you know, design use, et cetera. One is the placement and the proliferation issue that we've often discussed with respect to these. And there's a, some mapping here that you see where you have quite a few of these in proximity to the one that's being proposed. And I'm going to allow Shannon to talk a little bit about that context. And then the other thing that I think is relevant with respect to these facilities, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, is that one of our obligations is to try to obtain the highest standard of design. And as I indicated in the previous conversation about this, is that the product portfolio that Dollar General offers is much more robust than what we see. And the neighborhood that this sits in, and I believe that it's on the border of a suburban community, we believe that it can afford a better prototype. Because Dollar General offers a prototype that differentiates it from most dollar stores. And, you know, our concern with this particular one is, you know, how come it cannot receive that prototype or a more aggressive product offering that's put here in this neighborhood? So these are two large-scale issues for us with respect to proliferation. I'm not going to even get into the concerns of, you know, quality as far as track record on, you know, other dollar stores. Obviously, this is a new facility, but I would just caution with respect to those two very important aspects with respect to proliferation and also the type of product that's being put in here, particularly in a community that's, could stomach, I think, a much more aggressive model, for lack of a better term. And those are, those are very much land use and design-related items. So I just want to put that on the record. Shannon, if you want to add to that, please feel free.
Good evening, Shannon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
City planning. So earlier this year, we were tasked with trying to draft some legislation to disperse the oversaturation of these dollar, dollar stores, small box discount retail stores. You know, the three major chains in this is obviously Family Dollar, Dollar Tree and Dollar General. And as such, those are the ones that are really saturating our neighborhoods that fit the small box discount retail definition. And so the moratorium, as you know, was put in place as the city works through the various departments with the law department to come up with some concrete legislation for the city, citywide. We are going the route of a dispersion policy, I believe. And so with that being said, you know, we really wanted to look at this Dollar General proposal here in light of that, the legislation that we are working towards, moving towards in light of the moratorium and see, okay, how close are the, are there any other stores nearby? Are they within that dispersal mileage? And so the mileage between two miles, half a mile and one mile. And so as you can see on this map, respectively, where this new construction is going, there is a Dollar Tree and Family Dollar within six hundred and eight hundred feet, respectively, which is less than half a mile. And then there's also a Family Dollar was choose within half a mile. Both the Family Dollar and Dollar General are less than a mile away, point seven five and point eight five. So with that being said, that Dollar General is located actually not in the city of Cleveland, but it is in the city of Brooklyn. But it is within less than a mile of this new Dollar General. And so with that intent of not only the corporate responsibility, but also the dispersion of these facilities, that is what the key to the intent of the legislation. What we're really trying to do here as a city to disperse some of these facilities as well as demand more corporate responsibility for the public safety, health and welfare of our residents.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Jeff from the Local Development Corporation and Councilman Kelly has his hand raised again and so does Mr. Coyne.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the brief opportunity. I will just kind of, just follow up from the previous comments that the community position from the residents surrounding the project is the same. And I would say furthermore, that the residents were well under the assumption that once city council took its legislative action, that was kind of how the city was going to operate. So I would just encourage the planning commission to work closely with city council on that because the community's position has not changed. And, you know, as was stated, the intense clustering of these products is largely what the community, you know, felt a strong objection to.
Thank you, Morris. Who's next?
We have Tony Coyne.
Tony, go ahead.
Take my mask off, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great.
We hear you, Tony. So, good, good morning, esteemed members of the planning commission. I just wanted to address a couple of points that have been made and, but I want to preface my comments on the fact that zoning laws matter, building codes matter, planning matters, it's important. I understand sometimes uses are not as popular as other uses, but compliance with the code and the procedures of our city are very, very important. In this case, the developer is investing probably with the purchase of land and building two million dollars in the property. They have invested thus far over a hundred thousand dollars in due diligence. They are not requesting any financial assistance from the city of Cleveland. On the map that is shown, the Dollar General that's on it is not in the city of Cleveland. It's not controlled or regulated by the city of Cleveland. We have to adhere to some of these principles because they're important if you want to attract investment. I respect the efforts of the city and its council on the moratorium, I recognize that. This particular application is not subject to that moratorium as a matter of law. It just is not. Dollar General Corporate is anxious to work with the city of Cleveland. When is the time is right to address some of these issues regarding location and saturation? Dollar General would take the position that it's far better an operator than its competitors. And we're recognizing the moratorium and look forward to addressing some of the issues that have been discussed in the media as well. But this site should be reviewed based upon the current code, its compliance, there's no variances and it should be considered consideration. I think it's really important. Otherwise, really, we could go down to Houston and not have zoning laws and just see how many people show up at a meeting to object to something and make a decision based on that. It's not the way the city is operated. It's always followed its codified ordinances and it's gone through this process and frankly, has been reminded regularly that the moratorium would not apply to this application because it was pending for a year and never passed. And when it got through, it wasn't executed in time to address the site. So I really urge the commission, given the way this is to be operated, the way it's designed and laid out on this site, to give it consideration. Are there other types of Dollar General stores? Absolutely. They can be looked at, those may be part of the moratorium discussion. The Dollar General stores that Mr. Collier has identified in some other parts of the country are quite frankly, very interesting, but they're larger than this site and they can be maybe reviewed. But I think it's very important that we adhere to this. Vokon and Mr. Spong have done a good job with meeting with the building department, meeting with professional staff, meeting with local design review, getting the requisite approvals. And I have to remind the director of the Community Development Corporation that this site and this location site and this location was actually presented to a Dollar General some time ago as an alternative because of another site that was withdrawn. So I respectfully commission to give this fair consideration. And then I look forward to addressing this issue of these other types of retail businesses throughout the city at the appropriate time with the planning committee of council presumably.
Mr. Chairman, we have Councilman Slife.
Councilman.
You're muted, sir.
Classic, classic move. We're going to learn how to do this one day, huh? I say, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, I, it's, I just want to, this is maybe a bit of a soapbox, but I think the inclusion of produce as an afterthought in a local retail business is really indicative of this larger issue that people have when it comes to these uses, where they feel like we're exploiting the local market. And, you know, you know, I, I just, I reflect back on, you know, in the 90s when we built drugstores on every corner in the city, and a lot of those are now vacant. And to me, it just, it doesn't strike me that this business model is looking for a long-term play in our neighborhoods. It's looking like if the building is closed in 10 years or so, the ROI was met and, you know, and so be it. And, you know, we have, as a city of Cleveland, we have to put forward public dollars to help spur investment in existing vacant properties. And I just really worry about exacerbating this issue. So, you know, moratorium or no moratorium aside, I do think that it is, you know, part of the design review process in our code is to protect property values and enhance the character of our neighborhoods.
That's correct.
And, and I just don't think that this meets, meets that. So, you know, I'm, I, you know, will not be supporting this as, as my personal vote. And I just wanted to share that with the other members of the commission.
We have no other hands raised at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I guess my question goes back to Vokon. Do they have an image that they can show us today that shows us in context? I know they have something else on the deck and later on that they showed in context.
Sorry, I'm still on mute. As part of this deck, we do not have this building shown in context.
Something that you could share with us, maybe that's not in this deck?
No, because this, because of the process of this project, we have not actually created any of the prototypical drawings. So nothing has been modeled, nothing has been created other than this, this package seeking approval based on the prototype.
This is August. I agree with Chairman. You know, we always, as architects, we like to plan, and we have no idea how this fits in the neighborhood. There's no aerial, there's no, I don't know what's adjacent to it, I don't know what's across the street, I don't know what's a block from here. So to Chairman's point, that's, you're asking us to approve something that quite frankly is based on, on a chain that's a prototype out of context. Just one thing I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, even looking at, you know, the slide deck, you know, you can almost see one and see them all because this is sort of the standard prototypical model. The one thing that, you know, we, you know, emphasize, and this is a point of, this was even a point of, to a degree, compromise, given that the fact that there are, you know, different models, the DGX model, that could have been explored here. And I think that, you know, when we talk about this prototype, it's, it's like this one-size-sort-of-fits-all scenario, which, you know, I think that it's, it's reached its, its useful life, for lack of a better word, you know? And I think that we need to start investing and developing in response to the community that these facilities sits in. It's not okay to have, you know, a prototype fit everywhere just based on revenue alone. You know, I think the service delivery, all of those pieces, you know, matter. And to Mr. Coin's point, everything with respect to the coals, yes, all of those things do matter. In addition to that, the community posture, the use of the, the land, the product type, all those other elements are also things that have to be taken in consideration. And I know I'm preaching to the choir in a sense, you know, you know, given your knowledge of this commission and some of the very tough decisions that often have to be made here. So that's sort of my two cents, and we're just providing that context to the commission for it to deliberate, you know, around, around those items.
What I, what I would like to say related to the site context is, is the fact that an aerial has been shown that shows the surrounding buildings. The, you are correct that the Dollar General store itself is not shown in context from a perspective standpoint with those surrounding buildings, but the building and the site design and the thoughtfulness of the, of the building would be an improvement, in our opinion, to this corner lot, given that there is a bar across the street, a McDonald's across the street, and a security center next door.
We typically see that, though. You know, oftentimes there's photographs, especially in the beginning, and you're asking for final approval. So we see photographs of the adjacent buildings. Sometimes we see an elevation that goes down the street and shows it in massing in context with the rest of the neighborhood. And, and I'm not the one that normally says that. August usually beats me to the punch, and he's the one that normally says that.
Understood.
So commission members.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Jeff from the CDC with his hand raised. I'm not sure if that was from a previous.
I'm raising.
Or if you had something else.
Jeff?
My hand raises as well.
Oh, I, Mr. Coin, I did not see your hand, and it's not raised on my screen, but.
Tony, go ahead.
Yeah, so just briefly, one, if that would make a difference, we could certainly contemplate coming back, if you really believe that would make a difference. Given the aerial and the location and what you have, I don't know that that is critical, but to Mr. Fluker's point, if that would really make a difference for you, I would suggest that contemplate coming back in two weeks. I wanted to mention to Mr. Slife's comment, we had planned to have the produce items even at the prior meeting before the, I'll call it a kerfuffle came up, but we weren't given the opportunity to present. That was requested. And I think through the moratorium discussion, that may be something that you'll want to look at. But I have to just stress the following. This is one of the most successful retailers in the United States of America right now. It is one of retailers still building anything in the United States right now, and that's important. Number two, from a 19 standpoint, you can look at this in different literature. Dollar General has been very helpful to many populations, both rural and urban, because they were one of the, and have provided services to the communities in which they're located. So I know this may not be the sexiest project for our commission. This is a really important project. It's obviously going to be the last one under the current code, depending on what happens. And I think it would be important to know that the city follows its codified ordinances at the time, effort, and money, and hope that when you meet with these local design review committees, planners, the zoning review that occurred, that would, that would go a long way. This has been a vacant parcel for a dozen years, a dozen years. When it's location on Memphis, I think it's an appropriate use. You could call it something else, but this footprint for a retailer is appropriate in this location. So that's all I have to say. And I, again, would respectfully request favorable consideration.
Thank you, Tony. And Tony, I think you know me well enough that I do believe we have to show retailers clear paths forward, otherwise they just choose to go somewhere else to do their business. And I believe it's important in Cleveland to have good retailers. So my question came out of something because if we're reviewing design here, we need to review design. So, you know, I can't make a motion or a second.
Right, man. I think, here's what's disturbing to me is, let's just accept, okay, let's, I can't, there's a lot of background, can somebody mute, please? Let's just accept, just, okay, let's just accept the fact that I know for a fact, searching the web, that, that Dollar General does a hell of a lot better than other parts of the country, all right? In terms of aesthetics. This, this culture that we've created in this country is one of throwaway. It's one of throwaway, and that's what we're talking about, too. It's not just, you know, there's two things here, and we can't conflict the two issues. It's, it's, it's what we're going to stand up for in this community from, from access to healthy options, and also the quality of life, what we're building, how that impacts people, what stresses it might cause. That's what we're talking here. So, and so it's not just zoning. It's not just, it's, it's a, life is a little more complicated than that. And, and, and we have to start creating very, providing very creative ways to help improve the quality of life in this city. And, and I just, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that even with corporate entities, I think a city like Cleveland or any city would welcome corporate entities that's willing to take part in that creativity and trying to provide the best possible scenario, you know, for residents in community. You know, there's four locations that house this type of facility in walking distance already. So at what point do you say that the need, you know, is there? You know, you got one, two, three, four that are all proximal. So the, the need for another, you know, it reminds me of sort of the gas stations, you know, were saturated on our retail districts at our, our nodes in our intersection, you know? And it was about business and competition. But, you know, there's more to that, and I agree with Mr. Fluker, you know, in that context. And, you know, the sad part about it is with some of the corporations is that, you know, this is not about the city being closed for business. The question becomes, if you want to do business, how do you do it? It's not what you do, it's how you do it. And that's really what this boils down to. This is no attack. This is no Cleveland suffering, and we're in desperate need of everything that falls out of the sky either. This is just a conversation and an important thing that I think we as a commission have to uphold, is the fact that we need responsible investment when you are going through the type of transition that we're going through. That heightens the level of responsibility. It doesn't diminish, it doesn't become a desperate situation. That's when you should double down and say, okay, we have to be very critical, creative, and, and, and put the priority of people first. That's what I think.
I think you're all good comments. I mean, you know, we have zoning that approves us in this area, but that's what we're looking at also is the design. So we see a design out of context, we see a design that frankly, we may not like. So the question for, to go back to Dollar General is, what do we, what would we expect to think that this is a good product for this area? Because realistically, maybe if it looked different, it looked better, it looked in context, it was an upgrade for the neighborhood, would this be something that we would want there? And then, second of all, would that make the other, you know, discount dollar stores either go out of business or upgrade their facades, too? I mean, I think August had some really good points about, this is something that they look like they just dropped a prototype in here. Prototypes, there's a number of prototypes, and there's a number of opportunities to alter the prototype. So I guess it goes back to the commission members. What have you seen? What would give the applicant either a clear path forward of what they need to do or their preferences?
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Spong and Mr. Coin have raised their hands.
Okay, go ahead.
Am I able to share my screen quickly on behalf of the client who's asked me to show a quick overlay of the site plan with the context? Is that allowed, or do we?
We don't.
We have to see if we can do it. So Maurice, is there a possible way to do that?
Generally don't do that. I can do it if you want me to.
Sure.
I'm requesting to share content.
This will crash our system.
We will try not to. I don't think it's, I don't think it's working on mine, to tell you the truth. The share content tab is not working.
Well, here, maybe, because this seems like something that was done at the last second. I wouldn't be better off. And, members, I can't make a motion or a second.
Yeah, we have it disabled. Mr. Chairman, we have it disabled for this session, so I can't do it.
Okay.
Don't, you can email, you can email me something, and I can, I can put it up there right away. Mr. Coin, I think we're getting a lot of feedback from your microphone. If you're not speaking, please leave it muted. Thank you. I don't know why. Sounds like you have a train in your room.
So we'll hear from some people with the hands raised. But commission members, we need to think about what we want to do with this case. I mean, obviously, if there's certain things from a design perspective you're looking at that you're not happy with, or the context which you would like to see, we need to be able to talk about those kind of things. If you just want to deny, it has to be denied based on something. If you want a table, you have to base it on something to give them clear, a clear path to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Coin does have his hand raised this time literally and figuratively, as well as Mr. Fluker.
Okay, so I'll go to Mr. Coin, then I'll go to Mr. Fluker.
Yeah, briefly, what I'd like to do is request a tabling for two weeks. I respect Mr. Fluker's comments. It's very difficult to put it in a context when you go through a process, though, and you think you're compliant and you're getting a no because it may be not, I mean, that may not be what certain, certain people want. And to design it now or to make changes now is going to be darn near impossible. The context of the site, we can address that. And I just remind the commission, I mean, it's a crossroom at McDonald's, Taco Bell, Burger King, Dina's Pizza, O'Leary's Auto Parts Store. A lot of it is sort of your traditional national retailing. A lot of those are their traditional architectural designs as well. But to Mr. Fluker's comment, look, I would like to at least say that we could table it for two weeks. Let me talk to MSP. And I remind the commission, this is not a Dollar General issue if this goes the wrong way. MSP is a small business development firm doing this. It's not inexpensive, and they do feel they followed all of the directions from the city in terms of personnel and codified ordinances. But I respect your comments on Mr. Fluker in particular. And, Mr. Bowen, I would request that we table the matter at this point in time. And if you want to give us further direction, however, we'd be welcome to hear that from the commission.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the commission members then, from a design standpoint, obviously they know massing context, we want to see that. From a design standpoint, do you have comments that you'd like them to think about when they come back in two weeks?
Mr. Chairman, I do have the additional material from the app. Do you want me to display it?
Well, I'd rather not, just because it was done quickly. I would rather, unless there's another commission member that wants it done, because I would rather just, you know, get them teed up for the next time. um, because I would rather just, you know, get them teed up for the next time.
Um, here's, here's, and I'm not, I'm never, I'm never one to tell people how to design a building, because that's not our charge. Our charge is to, to uphold our civic responsibility to protect this community. Here's what, what Councilman Sly pointed out, you're going to open up another dollar store, chances are another one's going to shut down. So that's a negative impact, that's a stress on the community, so, you know, and so, why, if it's, so it's okay to, and that's, that's that one part of the social aspect, but the design aspect, since there's a McDonald's across the street or, or Taco Bell, so it's okay to come in and just drop the same old stuff there? Let's set the standard, set the standard, set the standard for small box retail, so that all these other retailers follow. That's, if you want to be innovative, you want to lead the charge, that's, that's my charge to this, to this, this company, that's my charge to Dollar General. So I would like to move to, to table that with those, those comments, thank you.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion, or any more, uh, comments that would help these people come back? Very nice, call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
No.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Motion carries, see you in two weeks. Okay, we're going to move on to, uh, proposed demolitions, and commission members, we'll try to make these quick, but, um, we also need to make sure that we take a look at, when we're looking at these demolitions, uh, the architecture and the historic significance of the buildings, do they, uh, um, do they fit well with inside the context of their surroundings, and do they contribute to their surroundings? So their loss would be something significant, um, but also the property, is it dangerous? Or, uh, will it become a detriment to the area because of its danger and life safety issues, uh, going on with it? Um, so think about that, think about your questions when it comes to those things, and, uh, who's here for the first one? Which would be a proposed demolition of the two and a half story of residential structure. And this is located at 17905 Euclid.
Yeah, that'll be me, hi, this is, uh, Wu Jun, City of Cleveland Demolition Bureau. So I actually have five properties that are right next to each other, that's across the street from a K through eight school. Uh, the first one is, uh, 17905 Euclid, and Maurice, you could just slowly move through the pictures.
I, I, I fell victim to what everybody else is, I was muted, do you want me to go ahead and go through all of them?
Mr. Bowen, did you want us to just go through all of them before you make a decision on all of them, or do you want to go one by one?
You're, you're muted too.
Okay.
No, Mr. Bowen, you're muted.
Correct?
You, you were muted, we didn't hear what you said.
All of these are across from the school, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one that we're taking is at the address is 17905.
Yes. Do you want me to just go through one by one, or go through all of them, then you could go?
Yeah, just this one first.
Okay.
I mean, that, one of the questions that we normally ask is about, uh, using some of the materials, uh, you know, the, from the demolition, it looks like they've taken all the value mater- valuable materials out of the building. They've been mining the copper, obviously. So, commission members, questions?
I move approval, Downing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, further discussion. Call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
You're muted.
Downing.
She just wrote yes. She typed yes in the chat.
Okay, and Sly.
Yes.
Motion carries, the next one, the next one is located at 17909 Euclid.
And Maurice, if you could just slowly go through the pictures as well on this.
Is that the last picture?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's a shame that these properties get to be like this, where they're falling, falling down.
Move approval, second.
A motion, second, further discussion. Call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Uh, she's having problems that won't unmute, she said, so you could just type in the chat. Did we lose her altogether?
Well, we still have a quorum, let's carry on.
And Sly.
Yes.
Alright, so next project.
Next project is 17913 Euclid.
Alright, Maurice, if you could just go through the pictures again, or the slides.
You made this easy for us.
I'll, I'll move approval on this one. So many reuse options, it's just hard to, hard to contain them all.
Listen, in a second, at least some of them had a little bit of wood still on the front of the building. I don't think you even have to knock it down, I think it's going to, it's going to be done by the time you show up this, this, uh, next week. Um, roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to 17917 Euclid.
Alright Maurice, just, uh, same thing, just slow, uh, slowly go through the slides for everyone to see.
It's hard to tell the condition of this, well, the basement's not hard to tell the condition of it, but there's so much junk in the building that it's, it's hard to tell, because there's, there's appealing attributes of the outside of the building. Can you come back to the outside of the building?
Sure. Yeah, a lot of our properties are, just got a lot of debris in there.
Second.
Motion, second, um, further discussion. Wu, the one thing I would say to you, do you go out there, um, to take these pictures, or do someone, does someone else do that?
Uh, we generally have, like, for the interior pictures, we generally have our asbestos surveyor go in and take pictures for us. So some of the quality of the pictures are not as good as certain other contractors, so unless I need to, I don't generally go in there.
I can understand why, um, one of the things you might want to do is, when they do the survey, um, also let us know about the structural integrity that they see, because sometimes the pics, because of the pictures, it's hard to tell. And I'm su- sure because of the basement shots that I could see, that it was pretty far gone, but from the outside picture, you would, you wouldn't be able to tell that, so if they could maybe do a short write-up on these, you know, and tell us about what they've noticed about the structural integrity would be very helpful.
Okay.
That is something we are reviewing.
Alright, we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Sly.
Yes.
Okay, this one is at 17901 Euclid Avenue, this is a two-story commercial build.
Uh, yes, so this one was actually our, a design review committee disapproved the demolition, and they're, they, they thought they wanted to keep the two-corner commercial structures intact for future development. Um, at the request of Councilman Harrison, I went back and took additional pictures. Um, there was an accident in the front corner of, uh, the property, and also there was, uh, a dead body that was found in the building. And then when I went back out there, the, the out, the, the rear door was wide open again, so if you could just go through the pictures, and Councilman Harrison, it looked like he's online, so he can make any comments afterwards if he likes.
Mr. Chairman, we also have Sharonda Watley with her hands raised, I believe this is her area.
Yeah, Sharonda could also.
And Mr. and Councilman Harrison has his hand raised.
Okay, great, we'll hear from them.
That was the most recent, uh, pictures, I dated it August of fourteen, so those were the ones.
Yeah, some of those, you know, a- and I know because when we had that one, uh, piece in over by my house, I actually went through the building, because the outside of the building from the photographs looked fine, but you go into the building, and you can see how floors sank, uh, you know, moved, and that building was unsafe. Um, sometimes the outside of the building pictures can be deceiving, that's why I thought this, the, the write-ups would be good.
Uh, good morning, everybody, this is Sharonda Watley, Neighborhood Planner with Cleveland City Planning. Um, so thank you, Wu, for the presentation, um, I just, I did want to echo, um, that the committee did have a very difficult time, um, reviewing this particular, um, proposed demolition. Um, they did vote to, um, deny or disapprove the proposed demolition, um, for the reasons that Wu stated, in terms of they thought that the building, um, um, held the corner very well, um, and that it was, um, good in pedestrian scale, and it, that it still looked, um, somewhat sturdy from the exterior. I do think that to Commissioner Bowen's point about having some sort of additional write-up included, um, in these design review packages for demolition would be helpful, um, to the committee as they're making their decisions and determinations as well. Um, and then lastly, um, Wu, um, did an awesome job of going back out a second time to take additional photos, um, to further present the case, and so, um, that was really appreciated by myself and by the committee, thank you.
Councilman.
Alright, I'm here.
We can hear you.
Uh, good afternoon, well, still more than time, good morning to the, uh, to the board. Uh, thank you, Chairman, uh, Bowen, for, uh, hearing this today, and so as you're right, the pictures does not do it justice. In fact, there are massive holes at the top rear inside of the building, uh, that can't, that, that wasn't captured by the, uh, asbestos surveyor who went out and surveyed the property. Uh, most recently, the, a, a truck actually crashed straight through the front side of the property there. It had to be pulled out of the, uh, the building, uh, by a tow company. So in fact, the center of the building, it, it, before they boarded up, I was able, I went out there myself actually, and was able to look inside, I didn't go in, but I looked from, I looked from the sidewalk, and you can see where the center of the building had, the, the flooring, the floor above had, uh, from the top of the, um, uh, from the top of the structure. And, and this building has been vacant, uh, and abandoned for over ten years. In fact, that entire row was once owned by one, in, one company, uh, who had walked away from the property over ten years ago, and have left these properties in the condition that we see today. Uh, that is also the crosswalk in the corner where the kids cross the, uh, cross the, um, uh, the street to go up the steps right into the K through eight school. Uh, I have heard from many residents, the principal and staff from the, from the school, in fact, uh, as, just as of last week, reached out about the property as they are, uh, now moving back along Euclid Avenue, coming and going to the school to get it cleaned and, and, and prepare for their, uh, virtual lessons. Uh, they, again, noticed the property and wanted an update on where it was in terms of demolition. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, yes, this, the, all, each of these properties are in very, very bad shape. Uh, some of the, found, the last property, 17917, if you walk on the side of it where the little key shop ones was, the foundational, the rear is collapsing from the exterior, uh, and what you didn't see from the photo. We have a very, uh, we have very viable businesses that's along that corridor, and these properties sit right between each of those viable, viable businesses. And as relates to pedestrian, uh, access, uh, y- you have individuals who will literally cross the street, and, in order for them not to walk in front of these properties, because they are afraid about what maybe is lurking inside, and the potentials of what could happen, uh, if they are walking past these properties at night. And so, we asked, uh, the planning commission for their approval, this is a long time coming, and we are really working hard to revitalize for, uh, having these properties along the corridor is just, again, an eyesore, and very much a, a, a concern of ours regarding safety for those who, who live in our community, for those who, who are visiting our community. So I asked the board, uh, for their consideration or approval.
I move approval.
I second.
Mr. Chairman, we do have several other people with their hands raised.
Who's that?
We have, uh, Mr. Fluker, we have Mr. Jamar Doyle, we have, uh, Councilman Sly, and Peggy Brown.
My fault, that was a mistake, uh, Maurice.
Okay.
Peggy, do you have, there was a motion, a second, further discussion, so, uh, Peggy, you have something to add? I don't hear anything.
I don't either, Mr. Doyle?
Yes, thank you, I'll keep our comments brief, because I think the councilmen summed them up, uh, very well. Uh, from the Development Corporation standpoint, uh, we support the demo of 17901, uh, Euclid Avenue. Um, as you all have noted, it sits across the street from the Euclid Park K eight school, and, uh, there's already been one dead body that has been found in that building, and with the unfortunate history that Cleveland has with young, uh, children, um, being, you know, pulled into vacant structures, uh, it is a concern. And, and, you know, look, we are just as concerned about other, about preservation as many other development corps and as the city, um, uh, is as well. Uh, but this building, number one, has been noted, is too far gone to save, and number two, it really, uh, uh, represents a safety hazard for the children at the school across the street, and for the community in general. So, uh, for that reason, the Development Corporation, Greater Collinwood, uh, uh, supports the demolition of this building as well as the entire block.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for supporting it.
We did have Councilman Sly had his hand raised, did you have a comment, sir?
Very, very briefly, and, uh, Mr. Chairman kind of had on to your comments at the beginning of, you know, when we look at these. Uh, I think it's worth reminding everyone listening that the City of Cleveland demolishes under its emergency authority, unlike the County Land Bank, which can demolish any structure because they own it. Uh, by the time the City of Cleveland's coming around, it's because these things are, you know, serious disrepair and danger, and uh, absent some, uh, you know, night riding in at the eleventh hour with deep pockets, you know, more often than not, these, these buildings are just too far gone, and it's unfortunate that we find ourselves in these situations. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's, normally it's very difficult to save these buildings once they've gotten to this point.
Yeah, no, a- a- and I don't disagree with you, I mean, there's a criteria we have to look at, and I think the councilman did a a marvelous job of giving, giving us context to this, you know, because we have to look at all those things, and, and maybe that's what the prime design review had with it, but- But with the context from the councilman and the CDC, I think this, and obviously we have a motion in a second, so it's an easy one to do. And that's why I asked, you know, Wu to take a look at getting a write-up on these things. Because sometimes by photographs, it's, you know, you think they can be saved and they really can't be. And I'll tell you, because one came up in front of planning commission before, where I actually had to go out there and see it. And soon as you walked into the building, you knew it could be saved. So I appreciate everyone's effort on this. So call the roll, please.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Councilman Harrison did have his hand raised again. I don't know if he had one additional comment?
Oh, no.
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker. Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Motion carries. That'll clean up the front of the school. Maybe the school can use this space once it's seated. Okay, that's design review, healing hands, school signage. This is the one we saw earlier today. So the people that are going to speak to this, I'll have to swear you in. Who's here for this one?
Laura Bala is here.
Do we have Lisa Carter as well?
Pardon me?
Lisa Carter also here.
Okay, so both, both, could you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
Go ahead, please.
We just heard this proposal earlier for the conditional use. The business owner, Mrs. Carter, went to a sign contractor and had these signs installed. But the sign contractor failed to pull a permit, which would have triggered the design review process. These are, as you can see in the image, perforated vinyl graphics that cover the entirety of the storefront portion of the windows and the return walls. The doors are, at this point, not covered. We went to, Mrs. Carter was very responsive, very remorseful that she was unaware of the process. We went to the Northeast Design Review Committee on an informal basis, came back again on Tuesday for a formal review. They were extremely helpful, spent a lot of time, worked very closely with the applicant, and I think came up with an excellent suggestion on how to mitigate the impact, open it up a little bit, but preserve Mrs. Carter's $3,000 investment in these signs so she can get her business open. And I'll turn it over. Sharonda, did you want to review the motion or would you like me to do so?
Hi, yes, I can do that. So Sharonda Watley, Cleveland City Planning. So correct, this project went to design review just this past Tuesday for a motion on the signage. So as you've seen, the signage covers up the majority of the window spaces and also the return windows for 650A. And so the committee was very understanding of the situation that Mrs. Carter was in in terms of having some signage up that had not previously been reviewed, but was trying to address this item in, you know, the correct way moving forward. And so that she does not lose her investment. The committee asked that there was a motion to approve with the condition to use only the healing hands cut-out logo and identifying text on the glass doors and to use the top of the logo on the right side of the storefront as the level line to carry across all the other storefront windows so that all the above graphics above that level line would be removed to allow transparency and opening at the top of the storefront. So there was an effort to have her remove some of the signage, but to also have some signage that remained in place so that she could still show her logos, her phone number, and then also her website.
Could you forward the images, please? Keep going. These were a variety, I put together a variety of bad options of how things could be changed. And keep one more. I think these are just the dimensions going.
That's all I have.
All right. Unfortunately, we don't have the image that shows what the design review committee asked for. This one is not quite correct, but it shows the difficulty. The design review committee noted that to do something along this line seemed unbalanced. You have the healing hand logo on the right is up higher than the figures on the left. So their solution, which I think was very elegant, was just to strike a line from the top of the graphic that you see on the right. But the graphic would go edge to edge of the window, not be cut down. And take that line at the top, which is at 67 inches, and carry it across the right-hand side, the return wall, the left-hand return wall, and then over the heads at that 67-inch level, leaving 23 inches clear above so that it is balanced on both sides. And I think a little more attractive than this bad example here.
Mr. Chairman, we still have Peggy Brown. I don't know if she has raised her hand intentionally or by accident.
Peggy?
That was from the previous submission.
Thank you.
Okay.
I move approval.
I second.
Motion second, further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker. Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul. And Slife.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on. And the next one is Southeast. Southeast Design Review. Dan Bickerstaff from Ubiquitous Design becomes a new member. We have a different one up on the screen, though.
Yeah, I don't.
There it is.
Approved Dan Bickerstaff from the last time. So let's do that real quick. I mean, he had a five-page submission. We all have a copy of it.
I move approval, Downing.
I second, Paul.
Okay, motion second, further discussion. Dan's not on the phone, is he?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
He's a new member now. Now we go to Southeast Design Review, Larchmere Boulevard Apartments, New Construction, seeking final approval. So everyone speaking to this, except for the councilman, you don't have to raise your hand and do this. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Rick, are you the only one speaking to this?
The architect is on the line as well. Depending on your questions, they may speak. Dean also has the presentation that he can go through to help with.
Okay, so was he sworn in?
I'm here, chairperson. And my hand was raised.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, go ahead, please.
Okay. Maybe give a little, give a little context. Actually, you know what? I think the planning commission should make a motion to have August speak at the next Democratic convention. Okay, seriously, though.
Agreed.
Seriously, though.
It would be uplifting. It would be uplifting.
Very much. Anyways, this has gone through quite a process with a, we've had two design review meetings already. The first one, I think, was 45 hours long. No, I'm exaggerating. But it was a while. We also had a meeting with the PRO, P R O of the city. And on the last design review, we got unanimous, unanimously passed. We also met with community people. And the councilman was very heavily, Blaine Griffin was very heavily involved with the community input. And there was a ton of feedback that we got. So what ended up happening, I don't think you saw, was our first version, which was a two-story version. And based on the community and the P R O and the design reviews, we made some drastic changes. And to that, I'll just summarize verbally some of the changes that we were sensitive to and did. We ended up making it a three-story project instead of a two-story. That solved, the committee was very concerned about parking and Larchmere traffic. And that allowed us to get 29 parking spaces on the site. And also allowed us setbacks for zoning. We could get that done. We unblocked neighbors' windows. We moved the trash away from where the neighbors wanted it. Or relocated it, I should say. We minimized the drive-through so there was not a speedy traffic pattern and also not a lot of traffic going on in Larchmere at one time. Then we added balconies to them in order to fit into the neighborhood that has that and to make it more attractive. We architecturally fitted into the context of the street. We created a drive-through rather than what we had on the first one was about a third of the frontage on Larchmere had what you could see parking behind it, some landscaping. We eliminated that and have the parking now on the back, which makes it more secure for the tenants. And also people going down Larchmere, it's much more attractive. We also put an entrance off of Larchmere and not in the rear to help with the P R O. Talked about different work-life situations and made the architecture of the exterior very attractive from my perspective. Also, I think this planning commission has seen the micros project previously. So I won't go over that. I will just say one thing, that we quote, "added a new room without increasing the size" by putting an office component into the project. So that's been done. So I'll stop there in order, it's been a long meeting so that I don't bore you guys and let you guys ask questions. And we can go through the presentation for whatever you would like to see.
Questions? Commission members?
I see Councilman Blaine Griffin is here, so I don't know if you had something to say.
Blaine?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if any community members are there. If I have any community members, I'd love for them to weigh in first and then I will close with that. If there are no community members, then I'm more than happy to go ahead.
Maurice, you see any hands raised?
There are no hands raised at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for allowing us to present this project to you. I want to, I'm in support of this project. I believe that this will be great for the Larchmere Boulevard area. We are starting to try to really promote that model of density. Right now, especially we could say because of COVID-19, but also due to just the economic conditions, we've lost about four or five businesses. We need to have more street traffic on one of this, one of the more vital, you know, strips in the city of Cleveland. We do have a housing demand. There's been a lot of demand from the folks that work in the University Circle area that really want to try to have housing for a lot of the people that work in their institutions and organizations like Cleveland Clinic, UH, and others. I will tell you that the community did have some concerns, which I share, around traffic on Larchmere. It is beginning to be quite a challenge. I did walk it with the Traffic Commissioner and Traffic Engineering in order to try to look at how we can mitigate some of the traffic issues on Larchmere. But I think that this project brings a lot of value. The developer was great at making changes to the, to the, to the project to accommodate some of the wishes of the community. The community had a lot of input. Larchmere is a very vocal community. You can't build a sliding board without getting several comments. I will tell you that there were a couple of people who had some concerns about the gentrification word. And there were a couple of people that wanted other things like a park and other uses. And, you know, I think that after I got off the phone with them and had discussions with them personally, they understood why this project is good for the neighborhood. So I'm encouraging this commission to support it. I, once again, the developer has listened to the Condo Association. They have reached out to me and have said that they are supportive of this project now because of the changes that have been made to promote natural light, to move the garbage can, to make sure that you have parking spaces. So we believe this is a great fit for the neighborhood and really to continue to help Larchmere and the Buckeye Shaker community grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
This is fully, and I have approval.
Downing.
We have motion, motion second, further discussion.
Council, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to Councilman Griffin for remaining intimate with his residents. That is always very beneficial for the process. And I think that we need to, and I think just even with some of other council members, when you are engaged at that level, it really makes it equitable, you know, for folks in the community. And it helps them to be able to engage in our processes in a, in a way that's a lot less combative. And I think it's really helpful. I just want to acknowledge Councilman Griffin for the extra work that he puts in with trying to educate his constituents and really be intimate with them on these projects. So thank you.
Thanks, Director. I gotta say, the councilman has a good sense of humor. He's stuck around for this whole time, too. So thank you, Councilman. Call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Flucker.
Yes.
Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Yes.
Slife.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Move on to the next. Good luck.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everyone.
Thank you.
Far West Design Review. This is for West 73rd Street Apartments, New Construction, seeking final approvals. 1351 West 73rd Street. Who's here for this one, Maurice? Maurice?
Oops, I was muted. Looks like we have Peggy Brown and Maggie Young.
Okay, if you could both raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury?
Yes, I do, Peggy Brown.
Who's going to start this off?
This is Maggie Young from Dimmit Architects. I can get us started here. So we're coming to you with a proposal for a new 75-unit apartment building on West 73rd Street. This is for final approval. I believe you've seen this already, so I'll try and make it brief and just go through some of the changes that we've made. These are some site context photos. As you can see, we're north of Detroit on West Seventy-third. Our immediate neighbor to the south is a community garden. To the north, it's some industrial warehouse buildings. And to the east, it is also some industrial warehouse as well as a soccer field. Across the street to the west, we have single-family homes, two, three stories. Down the house, very typical of that neighborhood. So you can see those kind of over on the right-hand column of photos. Next slide, please. This is the existing site plan showing the proposed demolition of the two existing warehouse buildings on site. Next slide, please. And this is our proposed site plan. I think just a couple of quick things to go through this. We have more illustrative site plans that Peggy will talk to about the landscaping. But just to note here, some of the site grading in the northeast corner and kind of across that east property line will be dealing with some grade issues that we will address with retaining walls as needed and kind of through step. So the building itself actually has a step in the middle there. You can see a dash line, it'll be more clear on our architectural plans. But the north side of the building is about six feet lower than the south side of the building. So that's also helped to deal with the grade issues. As you know, the West Seventy-third slopes down towards, towards the lake as you head north. Next slide, please. So this is our architectural site plan. You can see the entrance into the site from a vehicular standpoint will be at the north end, near Herman Avenue intersection. The parking, you would then enter to the right, to the underground parking garage, or there's additional small parking lot around the back of the building. The pedestrian main entry to the building is about in the middle where that blue arrow is. A series of elements and porches along that West Seventy-third Street elevation that will kind of help scale the residential neighbors. And we'll show that more through the renderings and so forth further along. And then other notable element is on the south side where we have the interface with the community garden. We've created a little bit of a pedestrian path, kind of a semi-private path for those residents going back to their units. They'll actually be able to walk in to those first floor units. And Peggy's done a really nice job with some landscaping in that area that she can talk to as well. Next slide, please. This is just kind of a quick diagrammatic elevation showing the maximum building heights and setbacks from the street. So you can see how we are in compliance. The top floor there, which is an amenity penthouse, is set quite far back from the edge of the building. So that is why it's permitted to be as high as it is. The allowable height is so high, it wouldn't even fit on the page for that one. Next slide, please. So this is our plan showing the lower-level parking garage. As I mentioned, you enter through the north end of the building there. The, the drive slopes down to get to that lower-level parking. And you'll see that in some of the renderings, it shows it pretty clearly. And then the additional parking around, along back. Next slide, please. This is the ground floor, so the, the entry level off of the street. You can start to see those porch elements with, with stairs leading up to each unit, which gives a nice variety to the, to the elevation and helps it kind of fit in really nicely scaled with, with the residential context across the street. And then you can also see, this is the area with the pool deck in the back as well. So it's kind of a nice secluded pool area. And Peggy will talk to that more as well. This is a typical residential floor plan, and I can talk a little bit about the step in the building you can see there. So our elevator and stair core in the middle there is where that building level change happens. That's a six feet, as I mentioned, the, the. Next slide, please. And this is the top floor amenity level. So we have a kind of a community gathering space. And then a very nice roof deck, which Peggy's got more details on in future slides. Next slide. These are our elevations. So the, the bottom elevation is the West Seventy-third elevation. You can start to see how we have those smaller scaled box elements, which are actually on the first floor. It's enclosed space for the unit with a little bit of a front porch stoop, stairs leading up to those. Because of the varying grades across the site, those stairs vary in their height. So it gives a nice little, just interest to the, to the face of the building. And we have really tactile wood composite material. You know, really helps bring the focus on those smaller elements and break up the facade. And then you can see the north elevation there on the upper left, that's showing the garage entry to that lower-level garage. And the south elevation, this is going to be somewhat streamed by the landscaping adjacent to the community garden as well. But it definitely references the West Seventy-third elevation as it will be fairly visible as you're driving down the street because of that open community garden. Next slide, please. This is the rear elevation, so you can really clearly see that step in the building in this view. We are mitigating that, that step through a ramped walking path along the east edge of the site. And that upper level where there's kind of more of those balcony boxes, that's the, the pool deck area on the left. Next slide, please. So these are some reference images to help show how we're using some of the materials on the elevations. On the left there, that, that brick screen material, that's at the north and south ends. Their porch areas are semi-enclosed with this brick screening element to give them a little bit of privacy. It is a little bit of a busy street. Those boxes behind the brick screen is a large-scale concrete look cladding material. And then the next few images there in the middle are references to a wood or wood composite cladding material that you can see kind of the natural wood tone and the darker stained wood tone that make up the four boxes across the front facade. And those are kind of a mix of vertical and horizontal cladding with a little bit of play with the texture and depth of that as well and the opacity as you get to some of the more railing-like elements.
Is it a wood composite or is it a, is it a solid wood?
We're most likely going to be using a wood composite just based on budget reasons. We're still kind of vetting the final material, but.
Natural wood will warp and move quite a bit.
Right, right. So it's just, you know, detailing it with the composite materials so that we can make sure we can get the, the look that we're going for, especially with the slack configuration. And then lastly is cement board siding. So that's kind of that main field color, that gray. And then on the other elevations as well. And we're playing with the width of that siding to help give a little bit of differentiation throughout the building as well. Next slide, please. Some more detailed shots of those materials up close. So you can see how we're proposing black windows throughout. And the ribbed metal siding, which I didn't talk about on the previous slide, that's only up on the penthouse level. So you won't see that much from the ground at all, but it'll have kind of that nice texture depth. And then the light fixtures that you see there in the middle and the bottom on the left, that is a sconce fixture that's being used at the unit balconies and entries. And then the other is, you know, exits and things throughout the building. Next slide, please. So Peggy, I will hand it over to you to talk about the landscaping.
All right, thank you. As Maggie mentioned, on the south entrance, I guess those doors were an addition from the previous meeting that was held for the design review on this. So what we're doing to address those south doors is create some private spaces and semi-private spaces with the development of a series of walls that pick up on the materials from the building. And then, so it would be a combination of the wood. We'd probably use a drive-in instead of some of the other cementous board materials. But we're also incorporating some green wall systems into there to give a nod to the community gardens next door. So opening up and kind of playing a little bit of peek-a-boo with some penetrations through the wall and that kind of thing, adding some color for some accent and provide a little bit of life through there. Now that walk does connect up to the east of the property. And Maggie mentioned the slopes and everything. We are able to get ADA compliant walks throughout the property without having any handrails on it. So that's a, a good thing to happen here. And that walk that codes across the east side of the property is actually a fire exit off to the back of the building. So moving across the back with the pool area, we've got a series of different spaces incorporating some shade areas, some open sun areas, a outdoor pool table or foosball area over in that southeast corner of it with some casual seating. And then as you move to the north, you step down a few steps to give a nod to the grade change happening across the site. And we move into a grill, a covered grill and dining area. And then moving farther to the north, a real casual, quiet sitting area that has a courten fireplace on the east property line. That is screened off from the parking lot, so you won't be able to view the parking lot. It'll become a nice little nook for people to use during the nighttime hours or even during afternoons. Across the Seventy-third Street side, we're giving a nod to the residential houses across the street, sticking with the more residential style of landscaping through there. Whereas in the rest of the property, we're going a little bit more easy flowing with a lot of ornamental grasses and perennials, not so many shrubs, but we've used more shrubs across the face. And then trying to pick up with the elm trees that are currently, I guess they've been planted within the last few years by the looks of it, using those as existing street trees as supplementing as we need to do that. Dressing the north side of the property with a walk down to that lower level. We have bike racks up at the main entrance off of Seventy-third, but there is also an internal bike rack storage area accessible from either down those steps on the north side of the building or through the garage door and through that man door. And the bike rack internally is right inside that door area. And moving up to the roof, we've got several amenities going up there with the long green space being a bocce court and secondary with a putting green. We've got some what are called stingray shade structures up there with the suggestion of hammocks underneath, a variety of sitting areas, changing of pavements from artificial turf to some ground cover materials to wood decking. And then topping it off with a rooftop bar and grill area with a TVs mounted on the wall of the building. If you could go to the next slide. These are some of the plant materials that we were talking about using over on the left. More of the, the items that are going to be used along Seventy-third Street. And then moving around the property, again, a lot of color, a lot of seasonal color to hold interest during all four seasons, whether it's with the brownish grasses during the winter or, you know, the spring bloom on some of the other stuff with the prolonged bloom time through the fall. Next slide. This is just the formal planting plan, showing everything that was shown on the previous page. You can go to the next slide. These are some of the amenities that we were talking about, some of the bike racks. Again, these would be the up in the upper left shown. They'd be the ones on the public court coming into the building. The suggestion of the bocce court, putting green, the hammocks and the kind of a contemporary-style stainless steel hammock that would be up on the roof as well as possibly in the pool area, the courten fireplace, the stingray shade structures. And then the pool would actually be a sun shelf pool. So the eastern portion of it would be six to nine inches of water where we could have sheds lounges in it. And then the sixteen by thirty-eight section of it would be where the swimming would actually happen. Suggestion of the outdoor pool table. And then across the west side of the pool, we're proposing to do a wooden structure that would be a shed lounge structure, but you could just put up some cushions and towels and kind of a community kind of thing. Next slide, please. We're doing some dark skies lighting, in keeping with some of the previous lighting shown on the building. The parking lot will be pretty straightforward, a real slim, low profile picture, I mean, profile lights. Then some step lights to illuminate the, the steps going down into that lower area with the grill in the dining area. We're using some tower-like kind of things to illuminate that walkway to keep it safe and secure as it cuts across the east part of the property. And then switching to some of the bollard lights and then even lower bollard lights that can be nestled in amongst the landscaping to provide a glow of some of the plant material and the grasses in particular without providing a light, a lot spill, light spill upwards. The next slide. And then these are back to the renderings, which I'll just mention this. You can get some feel of the rooftop and everything that we're looking at with the development. And Maggie can chime in with some highlights on the building.
Peggy, I've got a quick question for you.
Yep.
Is this building going to be pet-friendly?
It is, and we've had discussions about the pets.
Because some of the plantings, and I couldn't see them all from my screen, but I noticed the grapes. Some of them aren't very.
Well, the grapes were shot down during the local design review committee. So the grapes will not be going on in there. They had a concern for seeding of grapes and the proliferation of grapes taking over trees in the area. So they're off the table, pardon the pun. So that will probably go, it was originally a sweet autumn clematis. It'll probably go back to the clematis.
Okay. Just some taxes and some, some of the, some plantings out there aren't very pet-friendly, so I would just.
Well, I don't know if I've really used taxes, but I don't anticipate a problem. It's, I have pets. It's the same plant material I have in my own yard.
Okay.
So I've never had an issue with any of the plants on any other projects.
Okay, no, I just noticed the grapes, that's why I asked.
Yep.
All right.
That's been changed. You're welcome.
So we have a series of 3D renderings here. We'll start with some bird's eye here. This is from the north looking towards the southeast. You can see that kind of lower parking garage entry there in the middle of the kind of short part of the building. As Peggy had mentioned, there's pedestrian stairs down there as well because bike parking is right inside that garage. You can see that little man door. And you can, I think, really start to see the, the texture and kind of play with the opacity that we're doing on those boxes in these views. And it'll become even more relevant as you get closer to the building. Next slide, please. This is kind of from the, from the other corner, looking to the, to the northeast. You can start to see that kind of stepped wall that Peggy was talking about on the south side of the building, creating a little bit of screening and nice plant material to that community garden, just enhancing kind of that boundary and creating these really nice semi-private spaces for the units on that side as well. Next slide, please. This is that main entry point at the kind of center. You can see a canopy signifying that entry in a really glassy way to kind of break up the masses of that building. And again, you can start to see the texture on those boxes a bit more as we get closer, as well as those stairs leading up to each of the unit entries across. You can see how kind of those vary in height as you, as you move down the site and across the grades. Next slide, please. Of that southwest corner of the building, a little bit of a closer view of that pedestrian walk across the south end of the site. And I think this one really starts to show the screening of those brick elements on the ends nicely. Next slide, please. This is our final view. So this is of the pool amenity area on the east side of the building. And I think that completes our presentation. If there's any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Diane. My daughter lives across the street. Actually, her house is featured in your first slide. It's one of the houses. The street is, that street is, goes directly down to the park. So the traffic on it even before this building is really something, most of the year, not just in the summer. So one of my questions is, have you talked with traffic engineering? I see the entrance to the garage and the... Have you had those discussions? Because I can really see it backing up down to Detroit, because sometimes it does now.
Not sure if the developer line. That was a concern that was raised at the, the local designer view and block club as well. I think that is something we will look forward, look at moving forward is those traffic studies. But we do not have anything concrete at this point.
Okay, I'd just like to, you know, ask you to do that because it's, even with the way you've got the entrances to the surface parking and the garage, it's, you just need to be real careful with how that is and how large the entrance is, so it just doesn't back up to Detroit. The other thing is, is that the, the street did go through a total street rehab that was finished last year. So those trees in front of the proposed building are new. In addition, do you have? In addition, do you have a process working with your contractor on, you know, notifying the houses across the street as to when you're going to begin and how it's, how the construction is, how the demolition first of the old factories and the construction is going to play out? Because the street is, it's not that wide and they'll be affected by it.
Understood. Yes, we've been working with the, with the local block club and I think we would continue those communications. I think it's really important to the developer to maintain good relationships with the community members, so we will definitely be working with, any way we can to keep them as happy as possible.
Okay. Just wanted to note that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, we have our neighborhood planner, Adam Davenport.
Adam, you're on.
Hello, hello. I just wanted to get on to represent some of the review committees' comments as well as some others as well. Design Review Committee had high praise for this project and think, thought it addressed some of the needs that the community had much, much better than the previous proposal that was at this site about a year and a half ago, which was a townhouse proposal. They've, the Block Club and Councilman Matt Zohn in Detroit, Troy did host a kind of virtual community meeting with the developer and Dimmitt where some of the concerns that Commissioner Member Downing mentioned as well were raised and was a concern of the design review committees as well. You know, personally, we tried to align the project as close to that intersection of Herman to try and address some of these traffic concerns that Commissioner Member was talking about. From a resident perspective as well, I live over on Seventy-sixth, there's a lot of speeding on the street so that the increased traffic amount is noted and, you know, hopefully there'll be, you know, a good number of cars going slower into this project to kind of quell via traffic calming, but we also were looking at trying to do a possible, you know, stop, stop sign at the Herman intersection as well to kind of quell some of these issues. But the, the review committee also had high praise for the, there is a topographical nature kind of a step down that Maggie was talking about with the site. We, we thought that Dimmitt has addressed that well and it is also noted about the streetscape and how new it is on Seventy-third. It was, as mentioned, repaved recently and Councilman Zohn also stressed that importance of, of maintaining active communication with neighbor residents with the Edgewater Hill Block Club and, you know, noting that the city has put a substantial investment along Seventy-third, burying the utilities, and that should be, you know, taken into account when construction happens. Thank you.
Other commission members?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second further discussion. The one thing I would mention, especially since the city redid the street and everything, I don't know how they plan on doing their staging for construction. I don't know if they're going to do a partial street closure to get it out farther from the street edge or not, but I think, Adam, you've got to be part of that discussion to make sure that works well because that is a very active street and a construction site there is welcome, but it's also got to be appropriately staged. So with that, call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Lucker.
Yes.
Hurry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is City Club Apartments, new construction. This is final approval. We've seen this before. Everyone who's going to speak to this, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer under the penalty of perjury.
I do.
Who's saying yes?
Rob Ruland, the Site Design Group.
Denver Booker, Vokon.
Good morning, everybody. Who's going to start this off?
I will start. This is Denver Booker, Principal of Vokon. We were in front of you last February twenty-first of the year. A lot has changed since then in terms of our world. This project, however, has stayed the course, so we're going to quickly go through this, update you on a few changes and final details, particularly with respect to the landscape architecture. With me today, I have Jody Vanderwell, Project Designer, Rob Ruland from Site Design, our landscape architect, and John Slitter is here from City Club Apartments if you have any questions for the development team. So just quickly running through this, the site is just west of the intersection of Euclid and East Ninth Street, as you see here, outside. A few context images just to reacquaint you with the site. The site is currently a surface parking lot just north of the parking garage that you see in these images. This is the ground floor plan of the building. At the left and west, we have a thirty-foot wide, excuse me, easement to the existing parking garage to the south. East Eighth Street to the right and east is one way to the south. Service utility vehicles that would enter the limited access service drive at the south side of the building would come down East Eighth, turn into the service drive and then exit through the access easement back on to Euclid, so it's called wide circulation for servicing the building. The ground floor components have remained the same organization that you saw in February. Next slide. The second floor, the same, again, just pointing out that the restaurant is a two-story space with a second floor terrace overlooking the outdoor space on Euclid Avenue, so we have multiple levels of activity along Euclid with this project. Next slide. Typical residential floors remains in the same location of the site in February with a balanced approach between the building six-six-eight to the west and the City Club Building to the east. Next. This is the twenty-third floor. The amenities level, the light blue represents outdoor space and the dark blue represents generally the indoor public amenity space and the balance being core and service areas. This is the image of the building from Euclid and East Ninth Street looking south. The building organization, in terms of aesthetic, has, again, remained the same. You see those four primary white lines tracing up through the building, supporting the curved roof, fairly animated facade with these alternating irregular bands of blue shifting across the facade. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jody and Ron, who are going to speak about the details of the project and the landscape design.
Thanks, Denver. So yes, the general spirit of the building has not at all changed. We now know that we will be building the curved roof form at the top out of concrete, so it will definitely look the same as we've been rendering that form. You can begin to see the lush amenity level at the very top of the building, and we're going to show you a further developed streetscape and tenant identities for each of our tenants along Euclid. Next slide, please. So this is a view looking south along Euclid. At the very left, you can see the entry to the dog daycare. The canopy, the orange canopy, is really the main entry to the two-story building lobby for City Club. We have treated that bay a little bit different in that we are utilizing a laser-cut perforated panel that is backlit with LEDs because we really want to draw attention that this is indeed the main entry. We also refined the design of the canopy, which is sort of a theatrical design, which gives a gentle nod back to the theater that once existed on this very site historically. I'm going to turn this over to Rob to speak a little bit further about the streetscape.
Thanks, Jody. I think we go to the next slide. One of the things that we always like to do when we go through our landscape design is really plan for four-season interest, and so what you'll see as we get deeper into the presentation is really making sure that we have that, that four-season interest, whether that's evergreens, shade trees, perennials, making sure that this is looking good year round. In addition, we like to use a lot of different materials to provide a very animated experience at the street level. And so what you're seeing here is a series of different planters, and so some will be only made of metal and be brightly colored, then it'll be ceramics and be made out of wood. And so the idea is we want to have a very vibrant experience. One thing you also see in this rendering is that we want to utilize and really leverage the existing streetscape along Euclid, right? It's a beautiful space as it is and we want to make sure that we maintain all of the great existing trees and pavers that are already out there. And so what you're seeing is us working back onto our site to really help animate that space. So this is the view of the entrance to the doggy hotel, or the dog daycare, sorry. And so you'll, you'll see a nice small sitting area and dining space right out front and then just pass that canopy structure that helps to provide some lighting and some enclosure to the cafe spaces. Go to the next slide, please. So then again, this is a view, as Jody had mentioned, of the main entrance to the building, so you'll see the City Club on even canopy as you enter in. But what we really tried to do with the furnishings package is have opportunities for not only people that are visiting the site, so going to the cafe or the restaurant to sit outside and have that al fresco dining, but obviously for passer-bys to stop as well. And so we have site furniture that faces forward out into the street as well. We want to make sure that this is lively for people that are, are going to be visiting the building, but also just the passerby. And so those site furnishings are also different styles. Some are backed, some aren't backed. We want to provide seating, comfortable seating for all different users and patrons along this section of Euclid. Go to the next slide. And this is just another view as you look towards the cafe space and then where the restaurant is as well. So again, as I mentioned, a lot of different seating opportunities, really trying to have this eclectic mix of planting styles and planters and those types of elements. The one thing that I will note, and we'll get into this probably later in the presentation in a little more detail, just off to the left, next to the blue overhang, there is some vegetation that is growing or climbing up the facade of the building. We all know that's a very difficult ask for natural vegetation, and so in this one location, we are actually proposing artificial foliage, and we'll have a little bit more information as we go through the presentation on that element.
All right. So this is actually an additional element that we didn't have fully vetted at our last presentation. We are bridging over from our parking garage at the south, and we will be connecting the bridge essentially to our building core, so our elevators and stair. This is fairly open, however, it will be covered by a tensile structure and it will be nicely evenly lit, so it will be very secure and safe. As you can see to the right, our right is the dog daycare, which is a one-story space, and then atop of that, we have our dog run, which is accessible from the elevator and vestibule that you see bumping out from the elevation just to the right of the bridge. Next slide. Then this is a view of our northern facade at night. Again, no huge change from what we previously presented, really just further refinements on the bottom two floors as well as the landscape. Next slide. This is a view, a bird's eye view, so you do get a glimpse of the amenity level and the lushness there. Next slide. A view looking west. Next slide. And this is our southern facade. So one of the small tweaks that we made is we really wanted our curved roof form to stand out and be dominant on both the northern and the southern facades. So what we did in this case is our amenity Sky Club area is going to be clad in a darker gray tone so that the lighter tone of our verticals traveling up the building and then supporting our curved concrete roof will really pop out and be what draws your eye. And we'll also be lighting that curved form with LEDs. Then this is a view looking up the building, that northern facade. And again, our general palette has not at all changed. We still have the Spectra Aluka Bond material that we're going to be using for our blue sliders as well as the orange accent that's underneath our bump outs, our window bays, and actually at the two penthouse, the east and west sides as well as those, those splay out on, on the northern side. Next slide.
Mr. Chairman, I want to just interrupt real quick. We have two members that are leaving at one o'clock. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We'll wrap it up here in the next couple of minutes. This is just our general palette, which has not at all changed. It's all aluminum composite material, essentially a gray and silver palette with blue, blue and then an orange accent, brick at the base. You can skip these next two because they're really just calling out which materials are This is just a detailed shot of our entry, which we've already pointed out. We will have up and down lighting on our pilasters, which are brick, so that'll be a sort of a nice textural form, really at the pedestrian level. Next slide. Here you can see our up-down light at piers as well as our linear light that we're going to be using at the dog daycare, which is number two. You can see our LED backlit detail, number three, as well as our main canter, main entry canopy lighting, which will be LED bulb, sort of a marquee, which is number four. And then again, as we mentioned, we will be lighting the top of the building with linear LEDs, and we will also be using up-down lights, which will be color-changing options available. A view looking up on the northern facade, and I think the balance of the slides are actually site designs, so we can go to the next slide and show, Rob can talk a little bit through the site diagram as well as the plantings. Thanks.
So again, overall site plan for the landscape design, so as I mentioned, we are going to be keeping the existing trees along Euclid. We are having a variety of pavement materials on our site to help delineate and better define the entrances of the dog daycare, the apartment entry, and then the restaurant and cafe space. One thing that I just want to make note of, you know, you'll see along East Eighth Street, there is some pavement design or a painting pattern that is associated with that. We know that that needs to go through a separate review process, it's not part of this. Jody, is that correct?
The, yes, that's correct. The plantings, yes. The planters, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were aware of that. So this is the, the overall site plan for the landscape improvement. You go to the next slide. So this is the the overall site plan for the landscape. Do you go to the next slide? As I mentioned earlier, there is a small touch of artificial foliage along the building facade. So the image on the left is obviously the completed composition of the elevation. The image on the right, you'll see a kind of highlighted green band on those two on the facade. That is the location where we are going to be placing those. If you go to the next slide, there's a little bit more information on that. One thing that's really important to highlight about this, the image on the left is an actual installation image of that foliage combined with actual living vegetation. So when you kind of look at it from a distance, it's extremely hard to tell where the artificial and the real foliage begins. The artificial foliage is adjacent to that wood cladding right there. So that's the artificial section. And there's a product detail here over to the right. So I think when you're careful and thoughtful in how you use it, you can really make it work. Go to the next slide. The other thing I just want to include is a little bit of technical information. You know, this is a very high-quality product. It's a panelized system. So if there were to be any issues in the future, it could be taken down in pieces and replaced. It comes with a very strong warranty. It's UV-stable, so this material won't fade over time. A lot of times when you saw artificial vegetation in the past, it would fade and look pretty poor. And it also has fire rating characteristics as well. So again, a very strong system. Go to the next slide. And then finally, we put together this kind of a representative of our plant material palette along the streetscape. You know, as I mentioned, we really want to make sure we have four-season interest along Euclid. What's really tricky though is obviously it's kind of a northern exposure to the building, so light dogs is an issue. And then we have decent amount of wind too as well. And so making sure that we're specifying appropriate plant material was extremely important to us. And so having a combination of evergreen shrubs provide that four-season interest, various perennials that are more shade-loving, and then we do have early spring bulbs in all of our planters as well. Because you want to make sure that we get that first bit of spring color when we get a chance. And I believe there's one more, but I'm not sure. It was just a reference of the overall technical drawing and the landscape planning. Yeah, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Members, questions?
I would like to say I initially was not in love with the blue splotches of color and the orange, but I think it's grown on me. And I think it's, 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 it's been, it's done well, in my opinion. I was somewhat apprehensive, especially earlier on. So I would say you guys have done a good job pulling everything together.
Thanks, August.
Also really liked the accuracy of the ground floor plan. I think it kind of exceeds what we see, which is wonderful, the ground plan.
Yeah, I just might want to mention, especially since you have a doggy daycare there and everything, there should be an easy way to get a hose out front because you're going to find the male dogs all going to the same spots, which will be all over everything that comes off the ground. Because I have three male dogs that do exactly that and a couple of female dogs that'll do it too. So to be able to wash it down so it doesn't get an ammonia smell would be probably a good idea.
That's a really good point. Just to add on to that, we, we did design in three hose bibs along that north facade of the building to maintain all the various landscape elements in the entrance to the dog daycare. Because you are right, it will smell if it's dog made.
Yeah, all right.
I move approval. Downing.
Second, Curry.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion. Call the roll please.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
Please.
Yeah.
Paul.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
On slide.
All right. We're on the last one. Good luck, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one, Northeast Design Review New Member Nomination, Jenniferina. There's a packet of his resume in the back.
I move approval. Downing.
Second, August.
Motion, second, further discussion. Call the roll.
Bowen.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Booker. Curry.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Slide. Yes.
All right. I guess he has an extra four minutes for one. So Director, do you have anything you want to add before I adjourn?
I move to, oh, go ahead.
Please adjourn, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, Director?
No, we're, no. No, enjoy your weekend, Mr. Chairman, in all.
Everyone have a great weekend.
Thank you.